Folks, it's October the 9th, 6:01, and we're here at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular Council Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Randy Adams to do our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by our own Tony Mobley. All rise please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, you've said in your word that the fear of you is the beginning of wisdom and knowledge. And so, Father, we ask that you will, first of all, honor this gathering. Father, I pray that you will bestow your blessings upon the actions that are taken. Let everyone that is here follow the guidelines that ask that we are quick to hear, slow to speak, and slow to wrath. Let unity and peace be out through these proceedings. And we ask all these things in your son's most precious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
You want me to pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag and fidelity to the Constitution, Texas, one state under God, one individual.
At this time, we have a couple of proclamations, one on substance abuse awareness month and the other on domestic violence awareness month. We'll start off with the substance abuse awareness month. I'd like to call upon Dave Moore and I think Becky Malden are here to represent, I think, the Hood County Substance Abuse Council. Becky, you're familiar with this place, right? I'd like to read the official proclamation. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached an epidemic stage, and whereas at the time when our nation was struggling to contain health care costs, prevention, and truly the best investment we can make and the best place for prevention to begin is with the young people and their families. And whereas the Hood County Substance Abuse Council is sponsoring the month of October as the Substance Abuse Awareness Month in Hood County, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs and no illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to the healthy, drug-free lifestyle by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this month-long campaign. Now therefore, be it resolved that I and Enyueth, the mayor of the city of Granbury, do hereby proclaim the month, October 2018, as Substance Abuse Awareness Month. And in Granbury, I encourage all citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Community, sorry. Our next proclamation is a Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we have with us tonight Shelley Munsey and Melanie Dubry. Is that right? And who else we have with us? Okay, very good. Now I'll read the official proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels, and whereas one in four women and one in seven men will experience severe physical violence in an intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas domestic violence accounts for 15% of all the crimes in the United States. And whereas Mission Granbury, Alda Carey Shelter provides a safe haven shelter for women and children who are the victims of the devicistic violence. The shelter provides 24/7 care, and the volunteers offer additional services such as transportation, addiction therapy groups, budgeting and resume preparations, and whereas Mission Granbury received 619 hotline calls last year and 275 requests for victim services. And whereas preventing domestic violence means changing our society and its institutions and eliminating any attitudes, beliefs, behaviors, environments, and policies that contribute to this violence. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs and victim service providers, I and Enyueth, the mayor of the city of Granbury, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And in Granbury, I would encourage all citizens to become educated about the issues of domestic violence and provide support for the nonprofit organizations such as Mission Granbury that works towards the elimination of personal and institutional violence. Thank you. At this time, I am honored to present a recognition here. This recognition is to recognize the volunteers and the staff from the city of Granbury Municipal Airport and the Lake Granbury Conference Center and basically all the community for their efforts in hosting the Cessna 175 convention during the week of September 24, 2018. And I'm going to read just a little bit of a thank you letter. One of the most important files in my office is a file that is entitled "Thank You." And it gets bigger and bigger because there's so many thank yous that people give to the city of Granbury, and it involves so many different people. And I just collect those, and whenever I'm kind of down in the dumps, I just start reading them. And it's just really rewarding to see these thank you letters. But this one will also go in that file. It reads such as, it reads like this. It says, "Dear Michael Ross, I would like to thank your wonderful city for a successful convention. I am Terry Gillespie of the International Cessna 195 Club, and we were in the great city of Granbury on September 27 through the 30th, 2018. Pat and Stephanie Atkinson and Wade and I have been very, very pleased with Granbury, Texas, community. We feel very blessed to have made the decision to have our international convention here instead of Fredericksburg. After a fam tour in May, which a lot of the staff, myself, and other folks were involved in, we decided that Granbury was the city for us. We had people from Canada, France, from California to the New York State, and they were all extremely impressed by the city's Texas-sized hospitality. We would like for you to please recognize some of the great people that helped this be such a success." And I'm going to go down here to the last page, because I'm going to call upon Michael Ross and Pat to recognize some of the volunteers. But on the last page, you also recognize many, many of the citizens and merchants on the square. And I'm going to go down through some of these. They recognize Sarah Schatzel from the Hilton Gardens Inn, Charlotte Kirkendall from the Holiday Inn Express. Charlotte's out there in the crowd with us. Marilyn Satterwhite from Visit Granbury. Scott Young and Diane Hedges with Divine Wine and the HGMA. The shop owners of the wagon yard, Connie's, Red on the Square, Artifacts, Divine Wine, St. Helen's, that helped all of their ladies feel very special and welcome. And I hope they encourage them to spend a lot of money here. I think they probably did, I hope. The EAA chapter of the con plantation with Dave and Sue Cole also. Dave and Rhonda Smith and Steve and Barb Wilson and their volunteers that helped move our people around town. James Callaway, the shuttle driver who went out of his way to stay late to welcome our late arrivals. And many others such as Elizabeth Crawford from Joe's Pizza and Pasta, Roger Wall and Susan from the local goat distillery, and Randy Crawford from Randy's, the new restaurant over there in the shopping mall. Stephen Smith and Todd from Grumps. And all the local food selection was fantastic. And because of the fam tour, we found out about all these wonderful places to shop and to eat. This convention was such a success that we have another club that is now interested in having their convention in Granbury next year. So once again, we want to thank you for your generosity and hospitality that has been shown to us in Granbury, Texas. So that is a great thank you letter. And they move around all over the country. They go to all these different places, and they themselves will be back in Granbury. They're going to keep an eye on our construction of the airport and everything, but they plan on coming back. At this time though, I'd like to recognize Michael Ross and Pat that have done a great job also of putting this together. And they're going to recognize some of the important volunteers and the people that helped make this possible. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. If Pat and Kyle would come on up, as well as all the other staff and volunteers that are here, come on up to the front. This is a wonderful example, Mayor, as you said, of departments and volunteers and the public and the retailers, everybody working together to really show what Granbury is all about. And that's exactly what this was. It's one of those best-kept secrets sometimes, and we're just now starting to really get the word out and demonstrate what Granbury has to offer. I'm going to let Pat talk about how it started, and then Kyle jump in, because Kyle had a part in that fam tour as well. Go ahead, Pat.
Thank you, Michael. Boy, what a wonderful week we had in Granbury. We had right at 150 guests. They were responsible for 224 hotel rooms, a couple of dozen Enterprise rental cars, two meals catered at the airport, two meals catered at the convention center, and lots of shopping as the mayor talked about a minute ago from the Granbury merchants. These people have given us tremendous amount of feedback and are extremely happy with the way this thing happened. But I've got to say, we could not have done this without these people. This was a big event. There were lots of metal, you know, rolling around out at that airport. It was raining at times, there was lightning, there was sunshine. We saw a little bit of everything, and it just could not have been done with just our staff. The people that you have standing in front of you today are the people that made this thing happen, kept these people moving around town, at the stores, at the restaurants, back to the convention center, all the different hotels that they stayed at. It was just a wonderful thing. This started about eight months ago with just a visit at the fuel pump. One of our guys, Fred Pierce, met him at the fuel pump, and they said, "Hey, we want to look at Granbury. We've been to Fredericksburg, we'd like to see Granbury." So they gave him a courtesy car from the airport. They went and looked around airport, and came back and sat down and talked to us about this convention they wanted to do. So we worked with them for several weeks. We arranged a tour. We call it the fam tour. It's something that Kyle has brought to the city. And what a tremendous success that process is. It really did make the difference. And they've been very vocal about that. So I'm going to let Kyle walk you through that process.
Good evening, Council. Just a couple of quick notes about the fam tour. We completed the fam tour, the first fam tour with Cessna in May. And a fam tour is simply a familiarization tour where you not only get to know your clients, but you also get to know what their wants and needs are while they're in our great city. And then you can tailor a tour to what they would like to see. It's a common tool in tourism. CBBS, DMOs, and other organizations use fam tours to bring business to their cities. Like I said, it's usually a short tour. The first tour that I went on with Cessna was about a day and a half. I wasn't with them all night, but we did go out in the evening and see a couple of the sites that Granbury had to offer. This educates the client about the products and services that we have in our city, and it also creates awareness about some different venues, different restaurants, different caterers that the client may not have known about. And it also helps build relationships because you get to know the client as you spend time with them. Again, Pat mentioned there were 224 hotel room nights associated with this group, so we felt that the fam tour was a huge success. And as a matter of fact, it brought us another group that was on the fam tour, and I'll let Pat finish addressing that.
Real quickly, there was another couple that were part of the C-195 group that are also part of the SWIFT group. A SWIFT is a two-place airplane built in Fort Worth, Texas, many, many, many years ago. And that group participated in the fam tour, and as a result, have told us that there's a very strong possibility they will have their next convention in Granbury next year. Michael.
And lastly, I'll just read the names of the volunteers. Of course, we have Pat Stewart and Kyle Smith, the operations managers for the conference center and the airport. The airport staff was Fred Pierce, Steve Vale, Les Raganes, Mark Crane, Paul Bell. The airport volunteers, John Roberts, Jackie Vaughn, Kevin Ross, Don Christensen, Terry Heffley, Ron Stowell or Stole, Shane Stewart, tram driver James Callaway. Volunteer van drivers were Steve Blumquist, Dave Cole, Doug Green, Ray Lewis, John McComas, Toby Pekanek, Brad Peaton, Paul Sheed-Sling. I apologize if I butchered that. Dave Smith, Martin Sutter, Tom Thebault, Jason Trimble, Steve Wilson, and Tom Woodward. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
That's an outstanding report. And, you know, we get, like I said, we get many of those, but it just shows what our community is made up of there. So thank you very much, once again, for everybody that participated in helping that be such a success. Next, we're going to move into the citizens' participation, and I do not believe we have any speakers, so I won't go through the instructions and all that, and we'll just move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of considering approving the city council meeting minutes of September the 18th, 2018. Number two, consider approving a contractual agreement officially named KSA Engineering Corporation for Engineering of Record for the Municipal Airport. Number three, consider approving a resolution number 1823 granting the city of Granbury written consent to inclusion with the Action Municipal Utility District, which is AMUD, specified property located in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction and providing an effective date. Number four would be consider approving expenditures in the amount of $64,360.72 for the electrical infrastructure in Harbor Lake Section 14 utilizing the 2017 underground construction and maintenance agreement with the MFRAC Corporation. Number five, considering awarding bid number 17-18-08 to Wallace Controls for Electrical Meridian, Texas-based of their low bid amount of $123,674 for the base bid for the main lift station electrical improvement. As you know, Council, that's that lift station over at Hewitt Park that we've had so much issues with. Number six, consider adopting ordinance number 1863 amending the utility fund budget for the fiscal year. That's the same project to be able to move that money around so that we'll have the contingency funds to do that. And number seven, consider approving the proposal in the amount of $65,900 for the Amaz voltage interrupters and the other digital equipment from Baldorama Energy Services to enable the city to protect the LED streetlights from the voltage swells in the sag and to allow for the streetlights to be used for security purposes if needed. And that wasn't really defined a lot, but talking to Chris Kaufman, he was talking about the little packet, the little device that you could put on there and move it around all over, and it's really would save us a lot of cost right there. So there you have the consent agenda, Council. Are there any items on there that you wish to ask questions about or to be able to remove off the consent agenda at this time?
Mayor, I would ask that...
Councilman Allen.
Thank you, sir. I would ask that item number two would be placed with the number 25 that I put on, or if we could move 25 up and discuss item number two at the beginning of deliberation agenda.
We can move item number, you know, we can move item number two off to the deliberation agenda, and you would like to have that placed close to...
Or have 25 moved up to that item.
Item number 25.
Mm-hmm.
We can move it towards number 25, item number two.
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
Given the lengthy discussion of tourism last...
Yeah, I think so.
Given the lengthy discussion we had on tourism last, the last council meeting, I would like to move, if possible, item number 23, the tourism fund budget.
Now, that's on the consent agenda. We're on the consent...
I know. But I'd like to see if we could move that to the forward section of the deliberation agenda, given that there's quite a few people here, I think, on that issue.
All right. Let me take a look at that. Let me get through this consent agenda here right now. Okay. Any more changes or moves on the consent agenda at this time, Council? If none said, item number two will be removed and discussed later, at a later time on the deliberation agenda. Normally, Mr. Allen knows that's at the beginning of it, but I'm going to go ahead and, and we're probably just going to move that to 25, and we'll leave it down there for where we can talk about that when we get to that one, if that's okay with you.
That'd be fine. Thank you, Mayor.
So, none. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, less item number two.
Some move.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan and a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. And as requested by Councilman Couch, I also have one of the items here that we're going to move up to the first one, and that being item number... Okay, we're going to move item number 22, which is a presentation for the IT. And we do have McLean here with us today, so there's no use of having them sit through all of this. So we'll have McLean. That will be, we'll move that up to number one. And Councilman Couch has requested number 23. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Very well, we can go ahead, we'll go ahead and move that into the second, and then we'll go into the deliberation agenda as printed.
Thank you, Mayor.
So the first item will be, the first item on the agenda will be the item number 22, which is to consider approving an agreement between the city and McLean Intelligence Solutions for $230,520 for the one year and approval of the hiring of a full-time IT manager for the city information technical service department. Chris Kaufman, do you have a staff report on that?
Yes, we have it included in your packet, but I have Michael ready to address and answer questions for you. But before we do, I'd like to just put in a little comment on my own that, as you all know, our technology department left, took early retirement and went and got another job, and so they're getting two paychecks now. So that caused us to need to look at our system, and Michael's been working hard behind the scenes to get this done. And so I'd like, I personally visited these folks' facilities with Michael, and I'll turn it over to him, let him tell about what's going on, what we propose.
Thank you, Chris. Council, as Chris said, this past spring, we did have both of our IT personnel leave the city to go to work elsewhere. These departures underscored our vulnerability to kind of an over-dependence on city staff for the delivery of the IT services. Since that time, we have been evaluating the best solution is restaffing the department versus outsourcing the IT function. And after careful consideration and many months of tours and discussions with McLean, we have, we are recommending a hybrid solution for the IT service delivery. McLean Intelligence Solutions offers a comprehensive package of IT services that would improve our ability to provide excellent service support to all the users and give us much more depth with specialists like network engineers and other computer engineers and programmers that they have on staff that we would have to outsource as those come up. As part of this new package, staff also recommends the hiring of one full-time IT manager to administer the McLean contract and to provide onsite IT services that would be difficult or cost prohibitive to outsource. There's attached to all the services you probably have read that McLean offers and that they will provide as part of this. It's very lengthy. The IT manager would be the day-to-day face of IT and would be responsible for administering the IT contract with McLean and various other things that require hands-on service. The cost of outsourcing with McLean and the new IT manager is roughly the same cost as the staffing of the department as we did in the past. Staff recommends approval of the agreement between the city and McLean Intelligence Solutions for $230,520 for year one, which would be paid in monthly installments. Staff also requests approval of the hiring of the full-time IT manager for the city's information technology, excuse me, services department. And with that, please allow me to introduce Jay Battershell and Ben Terry with McLean Intelligence Solutions, and we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Michael.
I might just add that McLean is a well-known commodity in Texas. McLean Trucking, McLean used to own the Houston Astros. He is into many businesses. We met with him personally as well, and he's a family-oriented business. His sons are following his footsteps in running their businesses, and we felt very comfortable. You can drive over to Waco and see McLean Stadium. They're here to stay, and it's pretty interesting to see what they're doing with the IT world. They literally have been working with industrial and commercial private companies, but they're getting into the municipal market now. And we're not the first, but we're not the last either. So they've got a great program. We looked through their whole system. They've got call service. They'll have, our staff will be able to reach out to them with a problem by phone, by a little instant messenger app that shows up on their screen top, or by email. And they will respond. They've got a call center sitting there waiting to take care of people with technical advice and help. You know, one of our problems has been, it's like if a printer goes out without our IT guys here, they would have to reroute a map where they could use a different printer or something until they could send a service guy. And so what we thought we'd do is, let's maintain some staff that we've been using on a temporary basis and utilize them to help us with those items so that we don't have to call for a service tech to drive here from Fort Worth to take care of our problems. So McLean Intelligence Solutions is located out of Temple, but they have staff across the state. So I'm just happy to answer any questions you all might have, but they're here to answer as well. I'm just going to give you a little more background.
Thank you.
And Jay or Ben may want to say introduce themselves as well.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Jay Battershell. I'm CEO of McLean Intelligence Solutions, providing these IT services around Texas. It's family, serving families. We are a family business, as Chris mentioned, private health business, but we serve over 100 companies and municipalities in Texas. We are focused on Texas. It's all about Texas. And so we're excited about the opportunity with Granbury. We've worked diligently with Chris and the city managers and all of these department heads, basically, to understand the IT needs here. We will continue to grow and build that capability for city... We will continue to grow and build that capability for City of Granbury, and even with this initial contract, we're adding capabilities for disaster recovery that City of Granbury has never had before, so very excited. Ben, Terry is our head of business development, has been working with Chris and Michael for the last year, so this has not been something we put together in a month, we've been working a year to make sure this is right, so we're very excited about the opportunity, so very open for questions that you might have about our service or, or our services model.
And I will say, they've been in Granbury and they've spent a lot of money on the downtown square there. Thank you.
I might, I might just add that we've already been using them on a piecemeal basis for particular work. When Tony retired and Rick retired, we, we had, we were in the middle of an assessment of everything, and they were very complimentary of what Tony and Rick had established here, and we did find one vulnerability, and they helped us address that, we've already pledged to that. They also reviewed Tony's complete capital improvement plan, and we've adopted that, so to speak, or adhered to it. We understand that equipment needs to be replaced after a while, it does come to the end of the useful life, and that's a very key part of IT moving forward, whether we have this contract with them or another company or with staff, we need to keep this equipment within its useful range, so that we don't break down and we don't have a disaster. The disaster recovery is something we were looking at last year, we held off on it pending the outcome of this agreement, and with them putting it in their agreement, it makes it where we're going to be able to move forward, we didn't have to spend that money last year, and so it's kind of a net savings at the end of the day. But they do have two places, they keep our disaster recovery data, and one on the east coast, one on the west coast, and that's very reassuring that we, right now, we currently are backing it up and by manual effort and, you know, toting off the tape with us every evening or once a week, whatever these guys are doing, it's been taking care of us. Fortunately, we haven't had a disaster, and we don't want one. We came close when our air conditioning system failed in the, in the IT room, we had an insurance claim, and we've been waiting and dragging our feet on repairing that room because of that or fixing it. I gotta hear the word fixing in Texas, we use it too often, but I would like to say we're in the process of addressing that need, and one of the options for that, and that's not in this contract at all, is to use an off-site data center for our servers, and that would be relocating our servers from here into another facility in a secure, you know, constant, provided electrical and heating and air as needed, and storm-resistant building that you would have all your off-site stuff there, so that's in the future, but with these guys on board, we're able to feel confident with the staff that we have to move forward to take care of our IT needs in the future. So staff is recommending this contract to you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, mayor. First of all, we don't have football fields, but we've got some soccer fields we'd like to be named after y'all. We wouldn't, wouldn't brag about that. What you said, Mike, was that our total expenses is going to be what we had in our budget for this year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Not going to be no higher or no less?
It depends on if you factor in, when you factor in the 4% increase that would have applied to the last staff, if we'd have brought that forward, then it's a, it's a wash.
Okay. Second question is, I noticed this is a three-year contract, I guess?
It's, it says that, but actually, it's up to city council to approve it each year, and they understand that, that was something we had to-
We have an out if, if something happens, and they got an, do they have an out?
Yeah, the saying, I guess, is-
We shouldn't give them an out, it should be our out.
It's subject to council approval each year, yes, sir.
Alrighty. Okey-dokey, that's all I had, thank you for your hard work, and I thanked Airport Pat for the hard work he did on that, I didn't say anything, we'll go. Great job, thank you.
Thank you. Council, any more discussion, any questions for either our staff or these folks here? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement to, between City of Granbury and McLean Intelligence Solutions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, folks, for being here.
Thanks, Ben, thanks, Jay.
Thank you. As requested by Councilman Couch, we're going to go ahead and move into the deliberation agenda number 23, and then we'll start back where we started off with. That being, consider adopting ordinance number 1872, amending the tourism fund budget for the fiscal year 2018-19 and creating a convention and visitor bureau, which would be a CVB department, and I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to go ahead and kick that one off, if you would please, Chris.
Thank you, sir, council mayor. Just wanted to bring it up, that we need to move forward with Visit Granbury. I did want to begin my presentation thanking the Visit Granbury Board of Directors, as the council voted at the last meeting to not continue to fund them. We found ourselves in a, in a situation where it was a tender moment in relationships, and we needed to work closely with their board to make a smooth transition, and they stepped right up to the plate with professionalism and ethical activity to help us, to try to get us seamlessly moving forward for the good of the community. I, I think that that's really important, that everybody recognized that these guys, you know, basically, they got their funding cut, but still, they stood up to the plate and, and helped deliver a transition, and we were, we were able to get that completed last week, and so we've got some city staff that's been temporarily manning that facility as a visitor center. We're not by any means out here promoting conferences and things yet, but we're on the way. But I would also like to say that we contracted with Mary Lester, that's been doing the social media and working with the local television stations to bring them to town, and we're maintaining, I did an interim contract with her at my own peril in the interim period. We, we've got so much going on in October, I didn't want to miss a beat with the social media activities and all the activities that Mary has brought to the table. And Mary has been working for the city even beyond or prior to Visit Granbury being created, she worked with our CVB back when I first got here. Does a wonderful job, she takes people on fam tours and brings in writers from media and, and obviously shows them around and gets them familiar, and they write articles and they put them in magazines and newspapers all across America that helps bring tourism to our town. And so we, we have a short-term contract with her, this budget will, will fund her completely for a year, if y'all so decide. But I would like to just go over a few highlights of what we're talking about. Currently, we are located and utilizing Granbury Plaza, that's the rental space that Visit Granbury had been using, they remodeled and furnished it, and we're required to give a 90-day notice, and they, they did that October 1st, and so there's 90 days of facility there that we're utilizing. It may be that we want to continue to utilize that, I do not have it in this budget, there may be some options that you want to use that office space for a joint tourism and economic development office, you may not want to, but that's, that's an option that's been floating around in my mind that might work for you, because we are talking about moving forward with economic development and, and hiring staff for that as well. So, we've got that building for 90 days. I would also like to say that the phone number that Visit Granbury is using is the same phone number that we had for, for CVB, and it's all back home again, so the visit, visit granbury.com has transitioned back to us. They released all their intellectual property and all their furniture fixtures and equipment back to the city. They didn't have to do that, folks, that was a gesture of goodwill for the community, and I can't brag enough about that board taking action to do that. It took a lot of courage to make those decisions. What we plan to do, if we don't continue in that space, which is what I've got budgeted, is moving into the Gordon House and being co-inhabitant with the Tarleton Art Program, and we've met over there with Joel and walked through it and feel pretty comfortable with the office space that's available there for a visitor center, and some staffing for the, work towards marketing of the CVB and the Visit Granbury. So, we also, we plan on working closely with the Lake, Lake Granbury Conference Center, and I should say Convention Center, I always get those mixed up, guys, but we're, we're working closely with them, and we want to use the LGCC more in the weekdays and promote that and get some tourism in here. My budget lays out as the, my battery's low, I better get there quick. So, basically, the rough part of it is, we're talking about hiring a director for the convention visitor bureau, a sales manager, group services coordinator, and up to four part-time visitor clerks. Additionally, the budget allows $74,000 for consulting expenses, including Mary Lester, $53,000 for grant funding for events, and $120,000 for the Lake Granbury marketing promotion activities that we presented in the budget workshop back in June. So, those are some highlights of the financial side of it. In, in your packet, you've got an itemized detailed budget, and I will just say that, you know, it's a, it's a budget of a department we hadn't run before, and basically, I'm asking y'all to budget $707,000 to be used generally in those directions that's laid out in there, and that we would, if we need to amend something within that department, we'd be able to move it within one line to the next, if we need to move more money in or out of that department to another department, we would need your permission. But the, our program is, is to sell Granbury, and we want to do it, we want to reach out to bus tourism and reestablish those buses to come here again like we used to have, coming for the operator, they, you know, bring them here and spend the night and take them downtown to do the things that we have down there, Granbury Live and the dinner, the restaurants in town. It may be date bus tours, but we need to be reaching out to them as well, but there's, there's a lucrative market there. We want to incentivize old and new events held by the nonprofits in our community. You know, there's a lot of nonprofits that do things and they, they generate heads and beds, and we need to be able to measure that, and if there's something that we can do to increase and make them more successful, that only makes sense, because that's what's, that's what's been getting us to where we're at today. If you look around at all the things going on in the square, I know some people think it's nothing but whatever for the square, but it truly does put heads in beds, just like the car show coming here this weekend, we've got over 300 room nights from the Miata Car Club that's coming to town, the Corvette Show is coming to town, they're going to occupy hotel rooms, they're on the square, the Miata Club is just driving around, having fun together, and, and going to go to different places together and do things. But those are the type of things that, there's some nonprofits here that do things like that, and if we can help them maximize their efforts, I think we're going to see a result. The nice thing about incentivizing, using hot tax money to incentivize tourism for these events that nonprofits put on, is the nonprofits make money, that's their whole goal of having an event, and then they turn around and what do they do? They give it away. Look what the Optimus Club is doing with, with some of their funds, they have their fundraisers. Well, I don't know that they're bringing any heads and beds, they probably wouldn't qualify for what I've seen them do in the past, but you know what, you put a little incentives out there to help people advertise and get people to come from out of town and spend the night, all kinds of creativity will occur. I've done this in another city and it worked. And, you know, there's sporting events that are going on, we've got one of the best J, J ROTC organizations in the state of Texas, we've got national championship shooters out there, we've got a state-of-the-art shooting range out there, and they can host people to come to this town and, and host shooting events that blast a whole week, and we're missing that, and we need to, we need to seize the moment and get those folks and get those kids. We may need to incentivize that and help them advertise and help them, you know, whatever, to have their events, so civic clubs, promotion of the arts is another thing, we're working with Harvest Moon this year, like usual, but we're, we're going to be really sensitive to those needs, and we've got money budgeted in our budget for promotion of the arts this year that we've never had before, so we're moving forward to do that. And you can use these hotel dollars to promote the arts at a certain level of your overall revenue. So, we, we see these nonprofits, they come in and they do their thing, and, and they raise money, and they turn around and give scholarships, and they fix by-park equipment, and they do things for the community. That's good that we're able to, to wash that taxpayer money around and generate and prosper our community that way. Finally, the $120,000 that was budgeted in the budget workshop, which was a sticking point at this diocese, I put in this budget in an effort to get it approved and use that for the tourism promotion that we were presenting to the conference center back in August. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, or try to answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you, Chris. Council, open for questions for Mr. Kaufman on his plan for the CVB or Visit Granbury?
Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
As I look at the budget, I have several different questions, Chris.
Sure.
You know, there was a lot of criticism, in fact, it was one of the reasons that VGI was defunded, was because they were off 2% from the all-time high of the prior year, and yet, I'm not seeing any revenues in your budget.
Well, the revenue is already budgeted in our budget, at $707,000. That was the revenue that was in the budget that we adopted, so we appropriated $707,000 in our budget as well to be spent on, on promotion for this activity, tourism and promotion.
So, so I'm supposed, I'm expecting that the hot tax revenue will be $707,000?
At least. That's our goal, and it's just like anything else that we, we budget for, we're going to, we're going to budget conservative, we don't want to come in and, and tell you, hey, we're going to spend $750,000 and only bring in $707,000, so.
Okay, but, again, the whole idea that to defund VGI was because they weren't increasing hot tax, and yet, 707 is, I think, $25,000 or $30,000 less than what VGI was proposing?
Well, the $50,000 that we were given from the general fund to VGI is not included in this budget, so it stays in the general fund.
Okay, but if, if we were going to take up, what, what the city is going to generate in hot tax for this fiscal year, what would that number be?
Ava, can you get that for us? Isn't it $735,000? That's what we budgeted?
Well, each year, I can get our budget in $720,000, actually.
Okay. Okay, so here's the thing, is the money that we generate, if we exceed that amount, we can certainly appropriate it in next year's budget to do more.
Okay, but that's my point, that all the ruckus over VGI was, you're not increasing hot tax, and then we sent it to the city, and the first thing they do is say, oh, we're not going to meet the hot tax that VGI brought in, we're going to wait to see what we do bring in, and if we get in more, that's all good. So, this goes to, I guess, accountability and expectation?
I think, can I interrupt?
Yep.
I think that you're mistaken on why it was defunded. It's not because of the numbers or 2%, that's marginal, 2% over one year to the next is marginal. I think there was underlying issues that, you can bet out here if you want tonight, I don't recommend it, but, you know, this is a, this is a base budget, if y'all want to increase it, just tell me what you want me to do, I'll make it the way you want.
Well, yeah, I don't want to get into, but I know there's, a lot of it had to do with increasing hot tax dollars, and the first budget we see from the city is less than what VGI was bringing in, okay? So it's kind of hard for me to-
Well, it's, it's less because this is the number we had budgeted in our budget that y'all adopted. They were asking for another $20,000 above that, that we didn't believe they would generate, okay? And so we didn't throw in the $50,000 from the general fund either, so altogether, they were asking for $757,000, or what we were planning on giving them was $757,000, and they were asking for about 20 more than that in their budget.
All right, I'll just make one more statement on that. The hot tax that, that VGI projected to bring into the city is higher than the $707,000 that's being-
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, that, we were figuring, this is 90% of our hot tax, is what we predicted the 707 to be.
We discussed a lot about- We discussed a lot about leadership. That was the other reason that we needed to make a change, was we needed new leadership, and I guess I was a bit surprised that the proposal here is, the leadership is going to now be the city. When you, Councilman Mobley, and Councilperson Reiner, has said on multiple occasions, we don't want it back in the city, we don't want it back in the city, I heard it multiple times by the three of you, but now, here we are, we're back in the city. So my hope was, that, given that we needed new leadership, that would mean a new board of directors. And so I see this as a real opportunity to maintain the independence of the organization and let the council decide on how they want to fill those seats of a new board of directors. So is that, is that an option here? That we could potentially approve the budget subject to a new board of directors that would take the burden off you as the city manager, and put it back into some of the stakeholders that worked really hard to have a change happen with the current board, with the past board?
Can I add something to that? I mean, Gary, you know, I've thought about this myself, and I don't know if this is possible or not, but I kind of researched a little bit, but what about a commission, a tourism commission that's made up on hotelers, merchants, citizens, that, similar to what we have right now with some of our other, you know, we put together a charter commission, we put together different commissions that give us advice on certain items that we come, that we are faced with. What would be the, you know, I don't know if that's even possible, Chris, with what you've seen in other communities or other tourism?
What I would say is, what we've been doing, wait, wait, the definition of insanity is repeating the same thing over and over again expecting a different result. What y'all have done in this city is insane. You've done the same thing over and over and over again through the decades. You come in here, you create an advisory board, you hire somebody at the city to work with that advisory board, three years, four years later, there's dissension, they're not happy, they put it over to the other organization, and they create a board and they do the same thing. Why don't we just let this thing go the way I've got it planned? And, you know what? When we get a director, if that director wants an advisory board to help, it's only natural to reach out to stakeholders anyway, but if that director wants a formal commission, then we could do that. What Gary's proposing is to utilize, I guess, that's first I've heard of it, is to redirect and, I guess somehow, say, we're going to appoint a board of people to now look over these funds and spend these funds. And when you do that, you're going to be repeating history all over again, and that's what's happened here. And, listen, there's two people up here at this diocese that were campaigned against individually by people that served on that board last year. Whether they were doing it as a group doesn't really matter, but there was two of them that campaigned against, or for incumbents against challengers, which is natural, that's what humans have the right to do. But what's happened here is it's caused division. It's caused division, and we need to heal, we need to quit fighting, we need to show civility, we need to be able to take care of public administration with these dollars. We need to do it in a public, transparent manner that some people like better than others, but I'm telling you, that will work. If we will spend this money kind of the way that I laid it out for you, it's not exact science, I'm not saying that everything is going to be exactly the way it's laid out here, because we'll have to massage that because of history of not knowing what goes on, but it's a working budget, similar to what we had three years ago with the convention center back then. It's not earth-shattering, it's not groundbreaking, what's different is the program, the program. And we're going to hire people that have experience in that top program, where they're reaching out, they're traveling to sell, they're going to Austin, they're going, and this just doesn't happen overnight. It may take three, five years. People that have conferences, plan them, they have, they've put out bids three, four, or five years in advance of where they're going to have them, and that's what it takes. And you've got to have somebody out there selling it to make it happen. You can't just sit back and market your town, and hand out brochures, and answer the phone, and expect for the doors to fall off your building from the traffic that you generate. You got to get out and sell. We've got a vehicle budgeted in here. We're going to wear out the vehicle we got and we need to replace it. We need to have people rolling wheels out there, going to these places, walking into corporate headquarters and saying, hey, you've got 400 employees, we'd love to have your business retreat in Granberry. We just need that. You can do a lot of that by soft emails, soft calls, but you need somebody knocking on doors, and going to those conferences where those people are gathering to make those decisions. And there's actually event planners. I know a law firm in Dallas, I know a lady, that's what she does for a living. She does the events for that law firm, you know, they have about 50 employees, and they get together and go somewhere and have a retreat. We need people marketing to those people, and we're not doing that, and we're going to be doing it if you follow my plan. So, I'll do whatever y'all want, like I always say, I'm here to serve.
So you're not real, you're not supportive of an advisory board, I think? I get it, I get it, okay.
I tell you, I've got an advisory board that I have yet to get together that y'all just created, and I need to get them together, and it's hard to do.
Okay.
For me to do that.
All right.
Well, I agree that advisory board is, can be less than effective, I mean, we've done that. When you talk about repeating the same thing, we have repeated the CVB plan with an advisory board, and that hasn't worked out either, but I want to remind you of the things that have been said about what VGI has created, and that was the branding. You know, they created excellent branding, the social media aspect of it, so a tremendous amount of good was created by this organization, and I know that there was issues with the director, and maybe particular some board members. What I'm trying to say is, I'm going to work with this council in any way they want to appoint a new board, just name it. I go back to what you said initially, we don't want it back in the city, we don't want it back in the city. We want new leadership. I'm just trying to accommodate the things that were concerns and how we got to making such a drastic decision last time, but now if you're saying, okay, we're going to change our minds about what we said three weeks ago, then I guess that's, it is what it is.
Let me put an explanation point on it. Did I want it to go the way it did? No. I didn't want Visit Granberry back in my lap, but you know what? I've been accused of that, but let me make an explanation point. I didn't want it, but you know what? Y'all voted, and here it is. It's my job to resurrect it and make it happen. I'm doing my job. I really would have liked for you to come by to my office, you know, and say, hey, what about this idea? We could have worked on a plan and had that for tonight, but I didn't hear that till tonight. And here I am, trying to staff a office tomorrow with part-time help that I'm stealing from some other department, and I'm needing to make some decisions tonight, if you want to do something.
We get a lot of stuff up here, Chris, just bear with a moment.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, Mayor, are you through, Chris?
We're now here.
Okay. Mayor, I do have a couple of questions, and I agree with Chris.
Well, go ahead, let me recognize you there, Mr. Allen, go ahead.
You got me. Okay.
What's your question?
Okay, I agree with Chris, we have tried it, we've tried actually three directors, it didn't work under city guidance. I won't say everything, and I said this last time, I'm going to rehash it, that it wasn't a perfect-run organization, but we had people, and our tax revenues was up over the three-year period even with construction downtown. But, I'm just looking at the budget, and, you know, we just voted, some of the people that Gary said, Mr. Couch, I'm sorry, said that the city didn't want it back, but they sit here and voted $200,000 of our taxpayer money to remodel a building for less than six months. That's our money, folks. That's what hurts. If they knew what their plans was, and you can go back and look who was here and who wasn't here at the last meeting, and you'll see one of the votes came out the way they did, and that's okay. I vote my conscience, and I vote what good Lord tells me I should vote. But looking at this budget, it looks like to me that we inherited so far $59,980 that we didn't pay before in retirement, insurance, and workers' comp. We didn't pay that when we had it under them, the city didn't. Is that correct, Chris?
I'm glad you asked.
Yeah.
That number is similar to what they had budgeted in their presented budget.
Okay, but did the city pay it?
It was in the budget that y'all didn't approve.
Okay, it would have came out of the city.
Uh-huh.
Okay, my fault. Okay, buying a new car for $24,000, the conference center, convention center, whatever we want to call it, bought a new car six years ago, a van. I bet you today, it's got less than 50,000 miles on it. And most of those, when our new director goes to pull working back, we see it on the road all the time going up there, so he has put miles on it. I hope it's, if we buy a new car, it's used, because I agree with you, they need to be at conventions, they need to be where people can come to us. I noticed in this budget, there was no rent, which I'm glad to see that in a way, because maybe we will use the Langland Center, that we bought it, or took it for seven years ago. The convention center, you said, takes three to four years to get people to book in here, is that right?
On those big ones like we're talking about. We can get the little ones and the weddings and those kind of things, but the weekday business is what we really need to work on.
All right, you've been here, what, two years, three years?
Three, three years, six months, eight months, something like that.
So, we should be booking them now, under your leadership.
Oh, boy, don't get me started there, buddy.
Just ask the question.
I would have loved to increase more work out there, but you know the parameters I was working under.
Okay. We can blame it on anybody.
I'm not blaming it on anybody, I'm just saying, you know the parameters I was working under.
Well, I guess that's what you were doing, is giving us, asking the council to give you the green light to do that, right, tonight?
Yeah.
You're going to fill up the hotels.
Well, we're going to try.
You go start.
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to create a, recreate a tourism department that will live up to our expectations, is what I want this to be.
What do you think, you have that ready for the council to look at?
It's right here.
It's right here.
That's what you're going to do, right here.
This is your budget.
And this budget right here is going to put heads in beds.
Yep.
Okay.
That's my goal. Now, that ought to be your goal, too.
I'll fix the face, it should be all of our goal, and I appreciate it, Chris. Thank you.
I honestly didn't know what else to do. I mean, y'all really didn't give me any direction at the last meeting. You asked what we would do, and I said, well, I could put something together at the next meeting. I felt like it was inappropriate to share a plan when y'all were on the teeter-totter about what to do with the other organization. I didn't, I didn't want to appear to be, here's a better plan, I didn't want that. Explanation point, I did not want Visit Granberry back under my leadership, because we had played this game before, and here we are, and for whatever reason y'all voted the way I voted, I respect that, and I'm moving on, and I'm trying to pick up the pieces to move on and put together a program that can accomplish the goals and expectations that we've all talked about at this diocese and at the budget workshops.
Yeah.
So this is the budget and staffing that Chris sees that the council is wanting him to go forward with, right?
That's exactly right, it's a proposed budget.
And staffing.
And provided for staff, and I can't, you know, we started advertising on Friday for these staff positions, and I can receive applications all day long, as long as I'm not spending any money, I'm not violating any rules, but I cannot hire people to operate this business without authorization from this board.
I thought you just hired somebody.
No.
A girl.
Retainer.
Huh? I haven't hired anybody.
He's talking about...
Oh, the contract lady? That's a contract, it's like the internet contract.
To continue to do what she's doing, yeah.
Trying to get that going. That can be severed.
If you need her.
Need her. Need her.
Well, thank you for all your hard work.
Well, thank you, I appreciate y'all, I just don't know, it's a tender situation. Basically, we've gone through a divorce, and we've got a child here, and the step-parent, the ex-parent has been very congenial and worked with us to try to make the outcome on the child as best as possible, and I put together a budget for that child to carry it on. I can't think of a better explanation of what's going on here. We had a divorce, we had a relationship, we had a divorce, we had a child out of that relationship, and it's up to me to provide for it.
I don't understand all that. I believe you.
Counsel, any more, any more questions for Chris concerning this proposed budget for the tourism? Councilman Couch?
I'm going to just reiterate, I'm not here to be...
Gary, move up to the mic a little bit.
I'm not here to be combative, I was on the board for two years, I believe, and I saw the good that was happening, and I also saw some of the bad. I still think we have a real opportunity here with a blank canvas to maintain the independence of the organization, take the burden off our city manager, he has endless things that he could be doing other than this. So, what I'd be willing to do is to approve the budget that's been presented, subject to the city council appointing a new board of directors to a independent organization
Counsel, any more questions, concerns, or thoughts?
To Mayor.
Councilman Reiner? Councilperson Reiner?
You're fine, that's okay.
Long night?
Counselman is fine, it's the title.
Divorce, kids, okay, go ahead.
I was only on the board for a year. I was appointed, Mr. Couch appointed me, or nominated me, and the council appointed me. So I got to see over the course of the year, the same as Mr. Couch, all of the good, which, yes, the board of directors worked tirelessly and took time, which I said at the last meeting, tirelessly, and took much time away from their businesses and their own lives to try to make this work, and I applaud their efforts, I've told them individually that same thing, I've told them in the board, I've told them up here, and I think that at this point, because we've tried this a couple of different times with an advisory board, a board of directors, going back and doing the same thing over is potentially problematic. I think that Chris has a good plan, I am in the marketing business, and I agree with him wholeheartedly that somebody needs to have feet on the ground or in a $24,000 car, putting miles on a car and making sure that they are face-to-face with those people. I don't know that, at this point, taking the time or the energy of additional folks, or even some of the same folks that were on the previous board, away from their businesses, away from their lives, to monitor the situation. If we have the right person at the helm, that person will be accountable to Chris and to this council, and to the city, to help increase hot tax dollars by bringing folks in. That's the directive. I don't know that we need a council and a board of directors monitoring that situation, because Chris can pull the trigger on cutting that person off if that person is not doing their job immediately, depending on the contract, of course. But from a marketing standpoint, it is very difficult to do your job when you have six, potentially 15 to 20 people trying to tell you how to do it. Everybody has their own opinion, and they're valid. My suggestion would be, be accessible, the business owners around here are always accessible, they're very open to suggestions, they're very open to conversation, they're very open to telling you exactly what needs to be done in this town to increase their business. I'm serious, I mean, they know how to run their businesses, and they know what's needed. That's why they're successful. And a successful, whatever you want to call this position, I don't know what we're calling this position, marketer, for lack of a better term right now, will adhere... this position, marketer, for lack of a better term right now, will adhere to those suggestions. I don't think that a setup advisory board or board of directors is necessary at this point. Now, in the future, if it doesn't appear that it's working, there's always room for improvement, there's always room to do that at a future date. My preference would be, let's go ahead and put this in place and find the right person that's gonna start immediately by going to these conventions, by going to these conferences, and doing things a little bit differently to make sure that they're bringing, and that same person is going to talk to the businesses on the square in Granbury to see what those needs are and to see what they can do to merge those two together, to bring them in, to build the businesses and, and put the heads in beds that we are trying to accomplish, because that person is gonna know how to do that from experience, and we need an experienced person to do that. And if it's not the right fit, then we don't have fifteen people or twenty people trying to make that work. So my suggestion would be, let's go ahead and, and put this forth the way that Chris has proposed it now, and then if it's not working, Mr. Couch, then we can look at a board of, a board of directors or an advisory board of some type in the future.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more discussion?
I would just like to add that this, I talked to the previous mayor that was here when they invented this tax, and he said that it's just gone through the cycles over and over and over again. And I intend to adopt this child and raise it till it's mature, and I'm telling it...
Talking long as she's out of...
He found something he's...
Yes, they know what to do.
I don't want anybody to say I'm wishy-washy on this thing. I, I, you direct me to do this, I'm gonna do it, just like I would the water department or any other department. We're gonna take care of it, we're gonna manage this, it's gonna be run like the rest of the city. To think that seven hundred thousand dollars makes us sit here and talk for forty-five minutes in a forty-eight million dollar budget does not compute in my mind. We need to move on. This is a, this is, this is a key component to tourism in our community, but it is not the whole world here. This is important to a very limited few people on the square and very few owners of hotels. This is important, it's their lifeblood. We're gonna treat it that way, just like we treat how important water is at your house. It's serious, but it's not the whole world. We've got a big picture here, we've got a big city to run, we've got lots of things happening, a lot of moving parts, and we're gonna hire an expert, a cadre of experts to take care of this business, and we're gonna hold them accountable, and we're gonna run their budget and make sure they stay within the budget, and if they need to amend the budget, because business is so good, we're gonna be talking to y'all about doing that. But until then, we need a foothold to get going, and that's what I'm up against. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Chris.
I spoke too much.
You did, we got twenty-six items here tonight, you know that, right?
Sir.
How do the year?
So counsel, I think everybody's had an opportunity to speak, so I would entertain a motion to, uh...
I've still got a motion on the floor, don't I?
You didn't, you didn't make a motion, you didn't make it in a motion form. You said, I'd like to see, as Ms. Reiner said she would like to see.
No, you didn't.
So if you want to make it as a motion, you can make it as a motion.
I thought I made it, yeah, I'm...
Because I'm, go ahead.
I thought I did.
No, you did make a motion.
Yeah, I...
I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the proposed budget, subject to an independent board appointed by the council in any which way they would like to appoint those members.
So we have a motion on the floor here to approve the said tourism budget with a...
Subject to?
Subject to a board of directors.
Appointed by the council in any which way they would like to do that.
Second.
And we have a second. So when you say any which way, that means in a future date or anything, anyhow, anyhow you want to do it, okay. So we have a motion to adopt the tourism fund budget as presented and to have council appoint a board of directors any way they see fit to do.
In the next thirty days.
Okay, in the next thirty days. And we have a second. Any discussion, counsel? The second was Mr. Mobley, right? Counsel, first, Corgan, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilman Allen?
Nay.
And Couch?
Yea.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Nay.
So we have three nays, two yays, and that does not pass. So counsel, we have no budget. Hopefully, Chris can bring another one back to us. Meanwhile, we will just continue to cripple along with what we have until the council can have a budget.
Could I solicit something, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Could the prevailing side of that...
They could.
Vote make a motion to reconsider this item?
They could.
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
I second.
We have a motion by Councilman Couch to reconsider.
What was the prevailing side?
The prevailing side.
The nays.
That's the nays.
So it needs to be a nay.
So we either got Corgan, Allen...
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, Mayor.
We have the motion by Councilman Allen to reconsider.
Second.
And a second, by Councilman Corgan.
We have to define the reconsideration.
Oh, reconsider, yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna vote on reconsider. Councilman Corgan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner?
Aye.
So that is approved to reconsider. Counsel, is there any more discussion? Do we have a motion to...
Mayor, I make a motion to approve it as presented to us.
Pardon?
I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve it as presented to us.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to approve it as presented by Chris Kaufman and a second by Councilman Corgan. Any more discussion, counsel? Councilman Corgan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Nay.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilperson Reiner?
Aye.
We have an approval to go ahead with the said tourism budget that has been proposed by Chris Kaufman. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. We'll get this done.
Next, we will move in, and I apologize for the people waiting on this next item here, we're gonna move into item number eight, which is a public hearing and consider adopting, and I will say that we're gonna, we're gonna read into eight, nine, and ten, I'm sorry, Scott, we're gonna read into eight, nine, and ten, which they all pertain to the same one, and so we'll do the public hearing on all of them after, after Scott does his presentation. But we're gonna go into item, deliberation item number eight, nine, and ten, eight being a public hearing considered adopting ordinance number eighteen sixty-four, nine is a public hearing considered adopting an ordinance for approval of request, and ten being a public hearing considered request of the preliminary plat. Scott, would you read into this item, of course, please?
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, and Mr. Manager. What we have is a three-part request or three item request, both, all, all three require public hearings. The first is which a, a application is made to make alteration to our comprehensive plan, more specifically, the future land use map regarding a, a proposed development. The proposed development's located on the northeast corner of Loop five sixty-seven and FM fifty-one. What's being proposed is a multi-use proposal. This particular plan on the screen depicts that area in red as proposed commercial. The area that's in blue that's shown as type A lots, a single-family residential with a base zone of R seven or seven thousand square foot minimum lots. And darker teal that's over in the north, northeast corner is patio home, that's a type B lot. The first agenda item or first public hearing is to amend the future land use map. You can see that's, the graphic depicted on the screen is our current future land use map. The mixed use that's being proposed is inconsistent and congruent with the future land use map. What's being suggested currently is commercial along the intersection to a larger degree and low-density residential, that's the yellow area that's in the teal. This is what's needed. You can see the, the red area that's been diminished somewhat to a lesser degree. The area that's in yellow is expanded for single-family residential, and that little brown block would accommodate what's called medium-density residential in order to allow for the patio home type development. So that is, in essence, the first agenda is to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map contained within the comprehensive plan. Again, here's the overlay of our comprehensive plan, future land use map, and the phasing or the different distinguishable types of development that are contained on the property. Retail office to low-density residential that's highlighted in the middle, and low-density residential to medium-density residential in the northeast corner. Comprehensive plan has itemized descriptive points that are, that are tied to the future land use map and the comprehensive plan to get some guideposts as to how these are to be assessed. All that's in your agenda packet. This was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission with two, in essence, two approaches in order to vote on this. They can amend the future land use plan or deny the application that was presented. Your Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously by a vote of seven to nothing, recommended approval of amending the future land use plan, the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan to allow for the commercial, the low-density residential and the medium-density residential as developed, or as presented by the developer. So that is the first agenda item, number eight. We'll migrate over to agenda item nine, which is a rezoning request, and it's three parts to allow for the adoption of ordinance number eighteen sixty-five, sixty-six, and sixty-seven respectively, and that would be single-family residential based district R seven, light commercial, and planned development patio home. Circle back around to the developer's plan. You can see the commercial that's earmarked in kind of the red color, the type A lots for the single-family residential with a base district of R seven thousand, and the type B lots which are patio homes. This is just an oversight of the property currently as zoned and holding. It's been zoned incrementally in probably about three, if not four, iterations, one along Highway fifty-one, one along five sixty-seven, and then most recently, about two or three months ago, the expanded boundary to the northeast that was petitioned by the current property owner, Ms. Kim Lanceford. We have published the rezoning request in the newspaper and sent out property notices. We've received two so far in favor and two in opposition. The two in opposition are noted in red on your screen. The one to the easternmost portion of the subject property comprising roughly about four percent is in the city. The one to the north, extreme north, is located outside of the city, only one being on the tax roll, and that comprises about four percent, looking about six percent total. These are your opposition requests and letters in favor that are part of your agenda packet as well. We did get one actually this morning, and we handed that over to the city secretary. That percentage accrual actually considers that late arrival early this morning, so the six percent takes into account the, today's receipt. The project details, this will be done in three phases. It proposes a hundred and single, a hundred and five single-family lots, that is roughly six point nine acres, is proposed to be gated. There'll be internal sidewalks. As with the annexation petition, there was also a petition to the, to the state as well as the local public works department here at the city to say we want to be served by a city services sewer and water. This was part of a CCN, you got, you got some of that correspondence that the CCN provider in the area wanted to abandon this area and turn it over to the city. That paperwork is still in the process, based on our most recent discussions with the public works director. We don't have any kind of paperwork back from the state as of yet, but this can, this is formally abandoned by that CCN holder and it brought into the city of Granbury at this point in time. Again, this is a preliminary plat, so all this preliminary conceptual documents is taking place while that paperwork is being submitted to the state. Okay, as a part of the rezoning request, again, we have one that's for commercial, we have another type A residential lot that's for single-family residential based district seven thousand. You can see the three columns there, the middle and the third column, one being the PD standard in the middle that's being proposed by the developer. The far right column is our base district standards. So for example, in R seven, you can see our second line down, our standard is five-foot minimum for a side yard, total of fifteen, so if you're a five on one side, you need ten on the other, or you can have seven and five, and seven and five, you just can't approach into the five. The PD standard as proposed by the developer is five on each side with a ten total, so he wants to reduce the side yard by five. Further down, a rear yard setback, thirty feet for single-family residential. He initially proposed ten feet. I had a sidebar with the developer prior to the council meeting, and he said that that was a clerical understanding at DRC, that he wants to have the same rear setback as Josiah, which is twenty foot. So hopefully, we can get the developer when, when we're done with this brief synopsis to reaffirm that he's seeking twenty foot, which is consistent with Josiah. On further down, sixty-foot minimum width at the building line, sixty-foot width is what he's asking for, with the exception of two lots, lots twenty-one and twenty-two, and then maximum building coverage from forty percent of lot area to fifty-five percent. Again, this is consistent with what we've seen in Josiah. On to the type B lots, which is the patio home. Our patio home, the building footprint is offset onto the lot, it's eight inches on one side, ten foot on the other. The developer wants to center the building footprint on the lot, have five foot on both sides, so you still maintain that ten foot of, of open space between the structures. On down to the type, type B lots for the front yard setback, our base district requirements is twenty-five, he's asking for twenty. Minimum lot width at the front building line, fifty, he's asking for forty. Minimum square footage is five thousand, he's asking for forty-four. And then the perimeter fencing around the subdivision, the residential subdivision, he's asking for single-sided wood fence instead of the double-sided wood fence with masonry columns. The planned development that he's proposing does not present that type or standard of fence between the commercial and the residential lots. This is just a perimeter fence that's delineated on the development plan.
Scott, could I back you up a minute?
Sure.
Talk about the ten feet again, that's a typo, it's supposed to be twenty feet?
So there was a clerical misunderstanding at DRC, from my understanding, with Carl Greer in the, in the hallway. He was kind of curious about the ten feet as well. He was, he mentioned prior to this meeting that he wants to do the same that he has in Josiah, so that ten foot on single-family residential, my understanding, it should be twenty feet. And we'll get him to state that in a minute, hopefully.
That fits, okay.
Yeah.
That's good news.
Yeah, so that, that's the, for everybody's information, that's the third horizontal line down from the top.
And what about the front setback?
That's not...
Building line, what's the standard?
The front setback is, he's not asking for a variance for that, but that's, yeah, so I believe that's twenty-five, yeah. But he is asking for front setback variance on patio home from twenty-five to twenty. So that would be the northeast, easternmost medium-density development.
He, he's asking for what now, twenty?
He's asking on the, let me go back, so the...
On the type B lots?
On the type B lots, which is the north, the patio homes to the tree northeast where that little button hook is.
Yeah.
He's, he's asking to go from twenty-five to twenty from the line. But there is no variance request on the single-family. Okay, so here's a, here's your typical of the type A and type B lots that are kind of rolled in. Again, hopefully, we can get some clarification from Mr. Greer on the rear building line on the type A lot, single-family. The notes that are on the plat, this is the comprehensive plan, and of course, the rezoning request and the comprehensive plan go hand in hand. Your Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approv- Your Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the comprehensive plan as to the future land use map, comprehensive plan is recommended by the developer. Since they recommended approval, they allow for the consideration of the rezoning request to be consistent with the changes to the cop plan. Certainly, that falls on you as well. The comprehensive plan needs to be approved in order to approve these rezoning requests. Otherwise, they're inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Okay. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning change request as presented by unanimous vote, seven to zero, as they changed the comprehensive plan and their suggestion as well. The developer has a quick PowerPoint slide, but I'm going to touch real quickly on the plat and then defer back to council. And maybe we can get Mr. Greer up here. So as a part of the cop plan and the rezoning request, we have a preliminary plat application that shows the conceptual layout of the subdivision being proposed. Again, this shows it as 36.4 acres. It's zoned interim holding. It's in abstract currently. There's three phases to it, 105 residential units being total. He's aware that he's being assessed a park dedication fee as part of this requirement under our subdivision ordinance. He submitted his preliminary plat prior to the enactment of our new park fee dedication law, so he's vested prior to, under the less monetary assessed per lot calculable impact, which is 350 per lot. Okay. So water and sewer services, again, he petitioned to be on Granbury. Electrical services, Tri-County. He's working with his engineer, and they've submitted driveway permit applications to text on already for the loop and Highway 51. The park fee will be, again, assessed on the 105 lots. And there are some variances associated with this particular application as well. I'm going to just shoot over to the engineer's letter that we received in your, and we also have it in your agenda packet. We have a variance to 318, 410 to not upgrade Highway 51 and Loop 567 and Holly Hills to urban standards. A variance to 31N to not provide access to the north and only two points of access to the south and to Holly Hills. There'll be commercial drive accesses on 51 proposed once they get an end user at those sites. There's a variance request to 33 to allow five-foot utility usements instead of 15. Those variances were recommended for approval by your city engineer. And then there was a variance to 36A to not install sidewalks at Highway 51 and Loop 567 and Holly Hills Road. And a variance request to 39 and 45 regarding sanitary sewer connection points, and a variance to 39 and 46 regarding water. So defer back to the P&amp;Z recommendation. They went along with, in essence, the city engineer's memorandum. There's a very detailed discussion on sidewalks. They recommended approval of 318 and 410 to not upgrade to urban standard 51, 567, and Holly Hills. They recommended approval of 31N to the number of access points per 50 lots. 33A to allow for five-foot utility usements instead of 15-foot utility usements along the frontage. But they recommended denial of 33A to not have the five-foot utility usements along the side of each lot. Denial of the variance to 3684 regarding sidewalks. Denial of the variance to 39 and 46 regarding sewer. And they recommended approval of the variance to 39 and 45. The reason for the denials largely was because they felt, based on my understanding of the public deliberation, that the project wasn't far along in the detailed engineering analysis toward P&amp;Z, considering the variances like the sewer. We have a requirement, for example, regarding connectivity, extending to the furthest extent of the property. In essence, you've got to run a water and sewer all the way through and allow for connectivity to and through the property, and that grows the infrastructure. In this particular case, the developer only extended it not quite to Holly Hills and didn't allow for that extension point or connectivity point without going through the subject property. There was also a lot of discussion on sidewalks, that they weren't thought out enough by the developer's engineer at this point, which didn't warrant supporting level of support by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so those recommendations on the variances are being presented to you by your Planning and Zoning Commission. We had two conditions on the preliminary plat, so that went through with a vote of five to two. The two dissenters on that vote were really anchoring their decision on the sidewalk discussion. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended conditional denial of the preliminary plat by unanimous vote of seven to zero, with the two conditions being, one, a gate detail being presented by the applicant and approved by the city safety personnel prior to filing the final plat. Again, this type of condition is ministerial. What it does is just give our fire personnel a little more, and our engineer, a little more latitude to work together to make sure they have adequate turnaround, knocks, bots, all that good stuff before any detailed engineering plans are wrapped up and the final plat is presented to city council. And then we also had a second condition, a valid maintenance entity is being identified and notated on the final plat in order to properly maintain the gates, private streets, any of the private drainage systems, which is being proposed as a part of this plat. Since the P&amp;Z meeting, the developer has placed a note on the preliminary plat saying that all private HOA areas and roads and decker defenses will be maintained by the HOA. Of course, it can be filled out until the final plat is filed for record. Typically, we get a copy of the HOA bylaws and covenants and restrictions and get an instrument number and note take that on the final plat and file that at the same time. That note is where we put the instrument number when the final plat is filed. The developer has presented his intent to do that with this note on the preliminary plat. So for staff's notation on this second condition, we can do away with that. He's expressed his intent to have an HOA to maintain these private issues. So with that, Mayor, I will turn it back. Again, the developer has a presentation. I can look back, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions, should the council have any.
Thank you, Scott. Well, I think we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing along with that, and we'll go ahead and let the developer give his presentation during this open, during the comment session here. Anyone, anybody else wish to speak on this item? We'll be next.
Mayor and members of the council? Oh, I was going to let you do that. If you leave it up to me, we're going to be in trouble. Mayor and members of the council, my name is Carl Greer. I'm with Josiah Development. I'm actually the contract purchaser on this property. The owner, Ms. Lansford, has given me the time to work through the city. And so one of our stated goals was to work with the city staff to try to come up with a plan that basically was amenable and the city could be proud of. And I will say, for the planning department, they've been real great to work with. We've, actually, the plan you're looking at is the 19th one. We kept changing things, but not in an adversarial way. I mean, they had great suggestions and so on and so forth. And so it's actually been a good process to go through, and I think they're pleased with our plan, and I certainly am as well. Given just a real brief history, okay, how do I do this? That ain't it. Okay. Why let me go in order? Okay. There, there we go. Just a real brief history. The first development I did within the city of Granbury is Gemstone Estates. It's out on Highway 377, kind of on the eastern end of town. And it's very similar, you know, if you were around back then, that this particular project, at the time, there was nothing out there on city utilities. It was on the edge of the city limit lines. I had to annex it in like we've done this property. We extended water. I did the development work, and I didn't actually build the car leaderships or own those, but I did the development work for them so, because I know what a car leader needs, because I've done a lot of work in the Dallas-Fort Worth area about that. And so we designed those sites for them, and then I ran the main street through there and all the utilities, and then we began Gemstone Estates. Now Gemstone Estates is different than this project in the fact that what I was trying to achieve in Gemstone was a starter home community, but that was not like a lot of the starter home communities that you see. We have all underground utilities. We have concrete streets. It's basically trying to do a top-notch subdivision that will stand the test of time, and I think that that's proven. We've gone through, we're in phase six. Unfortunately, I don't have any more dirt out there. I would love to. Tried to buy the stuff next door, but could not do it. Anyway, so that was Gemstone. And then in the process of developing Gemstone, I went over and I wanted to do a gated community, a little step up. Didn't want to try to compete with the waterfront lots, but I found a track of land that had really nice pecan trees in it, kind of the same situation from a standpoint. I went with the owner. He allowed me to completely redo all of his design standards and the location of where the commercial was in relationship to the residential, which is kind of what I've done my whole career. And so I redesigned that, and then we built Josiah Estates. It's a gated community, kind of the next step up as far as housing prices. And it's gone real well. We're, once again, I don't have any more dirt there as well, and we're down to just 11 lots remaining in that. And, but anyway, that, just to give you a little history of what I've done in the city of Granbury, and I think that through the years of working here, when I first came down, my parents retired and moved to Granbury, and that's how I fell in love with Granbury, because I was constantly coming down to visit with my parents. But anyway, I've enjoyed working here, and I really stand behind the projects I build, and I think that they have stood the test of time as far as the quality of what we do. When you look at, which Scott touched on this, we're at the far north section, and currently, other than Abe's Landing north of the lake, there's really nothing from a residential standpoint on that north loop. You drive the loop, and right now, there's really nothing out there. And so there is one development coming on over right off of 377, but it's our intention to hopefully spur other development out there on the loop and do it in a quality fashion that will create other people wanting to come out and continue on. This is just a recent aerial that I had shot, just to kind of give you a better glimpse of the area as it sits right now. You can see Abe's Landing to the north, but other than that, there's really not much out there looking to the north. The other thing that I am doing is the current property owner, as like I said, I'm a contract purchaser, she also owns the south corner. And one of the things I'm doing for Ms. Lansford is we are providing for her utilities. Right now, there are no utilities there as far as sewer, so that that track can be developed by some other developer at some point in the future, which I think will help, you know, as far as bringing tax revenue dollars. It's not changing. This is just another aerial view looking south. And once again, you know, I shot this one, I was trying to show the proximity to the downtown area. At the same time, it does show that there's really not anything that has started along the loop. That doesn't bother me. I'm a very patient developer, and I know it's going to take time, but I feel like that once I get started on the residential and get that rolling, then we're going to be able to bring future retail uses to it as well. One of the things that we do, I heard Chris's comment earlier, that, you know, we do build childcare facilities too, so if that ever comes into effect with the divorce and everything, we might be able to help you out on that one. We actually have designed a childcare facility on the north side of our retail, and I used our normal facilities that holds 170 students. We have bigger ones that hold 252. And that is one of our desires, is that hopefully, one day, that as that grows, that we'll be able to put one of our explore childcare centers there. We do a very upper-end childcare facility. It's not working, Scott. Can you go to the next one? Sorry about that. This is simply just a, is kind of color-coded, just so I can point out kind of quickly. The vast majority of my lots are the 8400s. We had to go in that R7 district because there are some 60-footers. They're the kind of the light tan color, but the vast majority of the lots are the 8400s, just like I built in Josiah Estates. What I was trying to do is a couple of things. I wanted to create a open space or recreational area around the area that's got to pick up the drainage. I've already done full topos and all of our engineering and so on, and we know that we're going to be doing a detention pond at that north section. But we've also already started working on laying out, you know, the public areas. And so the area that you see right in the middle of it, that's also in the dark green, rather than have, you know, the children, the people have to walk all the way around the block to get to that recreation area, because we're thinking about doing, you know, open patios and grills and even putting in a tennis court and so on. But what I did was, and it cost me a couple of lots, but we opened up that center section, and we're going to do a curved walkway with landscaping and so on, so that people can cut through there to get to that open space as opposed to going all the way around the neighborhood. The area in the northeast corner, the 40-footers, that particular area is, I'm trying to do something a little bit different. You know, I've had a couple of different builders talk to me about doing some smaller lots for the empty nesters and so on. And most of the time, those get separated out where then they don't have any of the advantages of a normal single-family home as far as getting to the open areas and so on. So I've put that inside the gated community, and it'll have its own deed restrictions, its own building standards and so on. And so that's why that is up there, and that's also why the street is designed. So it's actually kind of separated, but it is inside the gates, and it will be part of the homeowner association to bring a different clientele inside the same subdivision. And I really do think it'll work. I've seen it throughout the Dallas-Fort Worth area, and I think it'll work here. And so, I'm trying not to take too much of your time tonight. If you'll go to the next one, Scott. One of the things through Josiah primarily because it has a homeowner association, Granbury's been through, you know, I've been here through the drought, now we got more than enough rain, but the water restrictions and so on. So I went to the group that does my engineering, but it's MMA, but they also have a, the owner is an actual MBA landscape architect, and they have a huge division where they do major projects. They did the George Bush Museum. They are doing the big project between the two stadiums in Arlington, between the football stadium and the baseball stadium. And I went to them and just said, "Look, I want you to take that department, if you would, and come up with a landscape plan and, you know, a southern kind of flair, but that does not use much water, so that we don't have to continue to add to that problem that's, you know, I think it's going to become worse as we go further." And so that's what that is. We're using a kind of a southern flair. They've designed all that. It'll be gated entrances with really nice entryways, and we're going to use a rock kind of, you know, motif right there, and then all the landscaping will be more drought-resistant, less water-use landscaping. The gentleman that usually would help me on the presentation hurt his back today, and, you know, I've been working with him for 20-plus years. He's never missed a meeting, but he literally couldn't get in the car. So anyway, Jacob is not here, and I apologize, and I assure you, he feels worse about it than you do. If you'd go to the next one, Scott. I've kind of already talked about this, but this is just showing the detention area, the amenity area. I'm going to be doing pedestrian walkways. You know, that's why I've got some additional open spaces over by the 40-footers and along our entrances and so on, so that, you know, and we'll have internal sidewalks, so that we keep basically the younger people off the streets and where they don't have to go so far around and kind of make it a safer way to get down to the area that they can utilize and play. Let me go on record, Scott and I talked out in the lobby beforehand on the development plan issue. Scott was asking me about the 10-foot, and I told him that, you know, Jacob and I sat through the DRC meeting, and we were both kind of scratching our head, because staff was saying, you know, 10-foot rear setbacks, and we were like, you know, I was trying to be non-confrontational, so I said, "Oh, okay, I'll do 10-foot setbacks on the rear." And then evidently, there was confusion. It probably was on my side, but I was trying to match it up like Josiah, which is a 20-foot rear setback. And so for those type A, the phases one and three residential lots, you know, please make that a 20-foot rear setback, because like I said, I was just trying to do what the city was telling me, and I don't, you know, it's just a miscommunication. So I have no problem with a 20-foot rear setback on that. I don't know how that happened, but we were just trying to do what we thought the city asked us to do. So I have no problem with that. So I have no problem on the development plan with that. When you, I'll skip forward real fast to the preliminary plat and Scott, if you'll, I don't know if this thing will work. Nope. Can you go to the first one?
The street?
Yeah. I won't spend a lot of time on the variance request on the items that the P&amp;Z suggested or granted approval on. I think we all are in agreement of those, but that is just a show of what we were doing there. On the subdivision access, the standard talks about, you know, every 50 lots have an access point, we have 105 lots, we're five over, but to do a third access point just makes no sense, plus it creates a danger issue. And one of the things that I really want to point out on that is that our main entrance is, and it's been fully designed, it's been submitted to the city before P&amp;Z, they just haven't had time to look at it. It's been approved by TechDOT as far as stacking turns, I've already done all the traffic studies, everything has been submitted at TechDOT. Anyway, the main entrance and exit will be on the loop, 567. The other entrance is over on Holly Hills and I'm trying to keep traffic off of that. So that'll be a gate like I have out at Josiah, a rear gate. In other words, a normal pedestrian, dominoes, post office, so on, will not be able to enter through that gate. There will not be a keypad. The only people that can enter that gate will be a person that actually owns a home. Now the front one will have the phone access, the keypad punch in. Now the police and fire, of course, they go in through either gate, they have, it's all set up in the gate system. So we're trying to keep off of Holly Hills, because it's basically an unimproved thoroughfare, and have the traffic going through the front. So that's what we're trying to show there and the staff were close with us and they agreed with that. It seemed like there was a little bit of confusion on the rear easement. The five foot access easement, especially on the loop there, is both a utility easement and a, it's an easement for the homeowner association to be able to maintain those fences on the loop. So that if a homeowner was to not take care of the fence, you know, and it starts falling down, and I'm sure y'all have seen that on some of the main thoroughfares, the homeowner association can actually access it through that easement on the outside to repair the fence, to put a new fence up, so on and so forth, and you don't have the battle with the homeowner trying to come through their property. So that's what that five foot access and utility easement along the back of those lots on 567 and on Holly Hills, that's what that's for, so that we can keep all that in order. There actually probably will not be utilities running out there at all, but it's there in case it needs to be. And then on the item number four, the variance request on the utilities, that I'm totally fine with the council if they deem fit to deny that request. I'm going to address that like I did with Gemstone and Josiah. I'll have the utility companies specifically state where they're going to run the utilities for the electric, as opposed to giving them carte blanche to just have an easements all over the subdivision, which I believe is really dangerous. What I do is I go to the utility companies, I have them design it before I submit the final plat, we get it all done, and then we come back and we'll submit it through the city, the actual lots where those underground electric lines go, so that there's not just random easements all over the subdivision, but they're in very specific spots. That way, if a homeowner or whatever they call dig test, they're going to put a pole in or they're going to dig or whatever, you know, they don't have to worry about them being randomly placed out there. So to deny that variance, I'm fine with that, because I'll come back and we'll deal with that at the final plat. And so I'm okay with that with the city. On item number five, in regards to the sidewalks, I'm sure the council already is well aware of this, this has been a learning process for me. When I first made the variance request, I had spent time driving 377, state highway, 51, state highway and the loop. And in driving all those, there's not a single sidewalk anywhere. And so that was my proposal as far as to remove that request to build sidewalks on the loop, 567 and on 51. Now on Holly Hills Road, it's a totally different issue. And Holly Hills is a very narrow street and there isn't even enough room between the bar ditch and the property line to put a sidewalk. And it actually would be, I mean, it's physically impossible to put a sidewalk there. And so in talking with the staff and going back after P&amp;Z and catching up to which, like I said, the council, I'm sure is way ahead of me on this, what I would like to suggest, if the council deems fit, is on 567, we can put the sidewalks in on 567, either once it's brought up to an urban design standard from the state or the city, or I can put them, you know, it needs to be put in the right of way, in the TechDOT right of way. And I've visited with TechDOT about that. The only issue, and we will have time to work through it, is they don't want to maintain it, because it's actually in their right of way. But I don't have a problem building the sidewalk down 567 up to the commercial track. On the commercial track, which there's some on 567 and then on 51, in the retail developments that I've done in the past, as the retailer comes in and builds their building, they always have the landscape buffer in the front along the main thoroughfare and they put their trees and bushes and then build their sidewalk. And so if we could do it where, as, you know, the permits are issued for the retail, because that's going to be a number of years down the road, and I'm just afraid that a sidewalk sitting out there is just going to get destroyed with the heavy mowers from TechDOT and so on and so forth, but if the retailers come in and then they could build the sidewalk as they build their buildings. And so I don't have any problem going with that, building those sidewalks in that capacity. The ones on Holly Hill, literally, it's a project killer. I mean, I can't do it. And I would have to completely redesign the lots, I would lose all the lots, plus I don't know if the tree preservation plan goes to the council, but we've done extensive work out there as far as measuring and marking all the trees. And there's four or five huge trees right there on Holly Hills. We build a sidewalk, they all got to be torn down. And they're preserved trees in our plan, in other words, they wouldn't come out. And they're actually gorgeous, they're huge trees. We're saving trees in the detention area and then also I'm planting trees on every single lot inside. And so if the council would help me on that and not require us to build the sidewalks on Holly Hills, it really would preserve the project. If I have to build the sidewalks on Holly Hills, I don't know what we do, because we can't, I mean, I literally have done everything I can trying to make that work and I just can't make it work. But I know now that the sidewalks on the loop is a big issue with the council and like I told Scott and the staff, when I first started working on this thing, I don't want to come up here, I'm too old for it. In a controversial kind of thing, I want something like Josiah or Gemstone that I can be proud of, my name's going to be on it forever, and that the council and the city goes, "That's a good project." And if it's that important to the city, then it needs to be important to me. And so I'll work with the city as far as getting those sidewalks built on 567 and then if I can do it as the retail develops out on 51, that would be great. So that's what I would ask if you could do that. And then the very last one is the sewer extension and I submitted a, we went back and engineered that, re-engineered it, because I already have one foot topos on the whole thing, we brought it up at P&amp;Z and I submitted it, I guess it just didn't get brought forth, I don't know. Because I haven't heard back from the offsite or the out of city engineer or city, because I just hadn't had time to work on it. But what we did was we can extend the sewer line, would you flip the last one on sewer, it's number six, excuse me. Yeah. What I can do is, we had not extended, or I had not extended the sewer to Holly Hills, because there's a six foot elevation drop going north. And the city had requested that we run a sewer line all the way to the north, well, it won't flow uphill. And so with that six foot uphill, it's not going to get to that stubout anyway, but I do understand the city, you know, wanting the stubout not to be internal on my site. So we re-engineered it and our proposal, or revised proposal, I guess, would be, I'll go ahead and stub the sewer line inside out to Holly Hills Road. And I just don't want to run the, it's a useless sewer line to run it all the way north to the northeast corner. But as a revised proposal, I'll extend that sewer so that it's out inside the Holly Hills right of way. That way I think that we meet the essence of the ordinance, getting it where the utilities are to all the surrounding streets. And I don't see any reason to talk about seven, because they said that that was fine.
Is that true, Scott? Would it meet the requirements?
So it's still a variance, because the intent is to extend it to and through along all public roadways. So the letter of the regulation is to extend it all along the entire front edge of Holly Hills. Again, for connectivity, but, you know, we've seen these variances in the past where they come forward and they say, "Here's some reasonable catch points in order to extend it." And then it's being presented to the P&amp;Z and the city council for their consideration.
Okay.
So it's still a variance.
Yeah. Still a variance. I was just trying to help in the variance by going ahead and getting it out to Holly Hills, that's what that other point is. And like I said, I am also extending the utilities for the track to the south. And I forgot to point it out, but this track, this entire area does not have sewer. There is not sewer out there. I mean, there is sewer, but nobody can use it. So I am running offsite utilities to the cost of $394,000. And it's going to be parallel to an existing sewer line that's already there, but I can't touch it. And so I'm going to be bringing utilities to the area and I think that that's a pretty huge deal to bring that sewer line out there. And that's why, to run an additional sewer line somewhere that will never be used because it can't go uphill, doesn't make sense. We're putting in a lift station, we'll pump it, we'll run it all the way down to the main sewer line.
And why can't you use the sewer that's out there?
Ask that question? It's an issue that it's, you know, we're doing a force main, it's a force main, but the city does not think that it has the capacity in that force main to take it. There's a question on how you get sewer flow inside a force main that's already being used. It's actually really pretty easy, it's done all over the United States, areas that have a lot of hills like Nashville and so on, and it's a computer system. It shuts down one side and opens up, it pumps through and once it's through pumping, then it shuts it down and runs it the other. But evidently the line is, I don't know, we can't see the plans. I can't answer the question and...
So when you say you can, you've already entered, you've already addressed this with the city and the city's saying this, is that what you're saying?
I've tried, yes sir, over and over and over. Tried to look at the plans, I submitted an open records request, it was denied. So we just, I just said, "Okay, I'm not going to fight with the city, I'll just design my own system, I'll waste the money and we'll run a parallel sewer line." We actually have gone out there and done topos and had to go out there with a stick and drill holes to find out where that line is. Total waste of money.
Can I ask a question, Eric?
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
What I'm hearing, we didn't have a capacity on our line to handle it, is that right clear?
I have no idea.
Our engineers are here, we can ask them. Maybe Scott can answer that.
This is a coordination with public works and the city engineer, so public works department and/or the city engineer.
Hello, Rick. Rick?
Mayor, council, city manager. The force main in question runs along the west side of highway 51. Everything on this lot flows to the river, to the lake and flows across. It is a force main. We don't want two force mains working together, we don't want the pumps coming on at the same time overflowing the line. So that's why we've asked him to design this as he has. That's the reason for it, so.
This is the force main that goes to Abe's Landing?
Yes, it is. And I have checked with engineers on this, that was the reasoning behind this request.
Are you doing, which engineering firm are they here tonight?
Both of them are here.
All right. We may need to just talk to them a little bit.
Okay.
The question, Rick, I got is that, I know that we had a capacity problem, even when the last one we put on the loop, we were concerned about what they were doing and they were going to, we may even have to have a grinder pump or something, is that correct?
I don't know what you're talking about, sorry.
Okay. You know the one that, I forget the name of it, but it's right over the overpass.
The apartments?
Right inside.
The apartment project?
Yes, sir.
Oh, they're putting in a new line, there's no line there.
Okay.
They're upsizing from the lift station to the main lift station.
When we were talking one day about it, and I may be wrong here, but I was thinking...
The force main that they're tying into, is that a lift station?
That's it, okay.
Yeah, so they're having to increase capacity.
That's down on Pearl.
I got it. Yeah, okay. Lift station number two.
This is, what he's talking about is tying onto that existing force main and having a SCADA system talk to each pump, so where they're not turned on at the same time and be able to utilize that flow line that's there. And so there's obviously some constraints there or they would be doing something.
Sure. Who did he ask open records for and didn't get it?
Those are private, under Homeland Security.
Can't give it to them?
No.
Okay.
Look at a map, but we're not giving that stuff.
But you'll tell me in that?
Oh, yeah.
Reason, okay.
So we got, you say we have some engineers that can...
Yes, sir. City engineers here and our consulting engineer.
I'd like to, personally, I'd like to hear what the findings was with the engineer, city engineer.
Sorry, council members, I have not had a discussion with Rick about this.
You haven't?
No, not about the force main.
Get our city engineer, Rick.
Discuss this with our consulting engineer with EHT.
Okay. Is he here?
Yes, I have him here.
Bring Chris up.
Save him some money here.
Good evening, council. I did speak with Rick about this issue conceptually, I'm not the engineer of record on this, I've not reviewed this particular development in detail, but I did recommend that combining an additional lift station with the force main coming from Abe's Landing would restrict the ability of Abe's Landing to be able to utilize the force main that outflows into the gravity main and discharges it down the system. So that's my recommendation. It's the two pumps working against each other, they could not operate at the same time typically unless Abe's Landing was modified to do so. And it's not my recommendation operationally to allow that to happen. So that was discussed with Rick in the past, conceptually about that. I can answer any additional questions or explain further if needed, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, you, I mean, you share, did somebody share this information with Mr. Greer too? I mean...
Rick did.
Okay, he did, Rick did. Okay. I mean, when he was standing up, he said, "I don't know, I just couldn't do it." I mean, it couldn't be done, but...
Let me ask a question, Eric.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I hate to miss this, but I'm as dumb as they come when it comes to computers, IT and all that other stuff we talked about, but the gentleman had talked about a computer that could be switched off to one or the other, do you know what he's talking about?
Yes, you can control the operation of the pumps via SCADA system, the city has capability to do that. However, the issue would be that you, the wet well, the lift station only has a certain amount of volume, it's able to hold before the pumps would be required to kick on to pump the sewage out, to keep it from overflowing. If you were to limit those two lift stations with a SCADA system, since they will not be able to operate at the same time, you run the risk of eventually overflowing one wet well if it needs to, if the pump needs to kick on while the other one's running too, there's, the capacity in the wet well is the issue there.
So it's not like a grinder pump system like you have at Lakewood Hills subdivision, where you have all these homes on a little lift station and it's pumping into a bigger main simultaneously that can happen? This is, what you're explaining to us is much larger in capacities and the demand is much greater.
Yes, from what I understand, Abe's Landing's lift station was designed to handle Abe's Landing only. It's not, and the force main is, it's all, it works together. So it wasn't designed to have another lift station pump into it. And operationally, the volume isn't there in Abe's Landing wet well to provide the buffer capacity. buffer capacity if this lift station was kicking, kicked on and it couldn't pump out. Abe's Landing just wasn't designed that way, so.
And just so y'all know, there are people about to kick off on Abe's Landing on another park for about 40 homes. So it's not built out, it's about halfway built. So that capacity was designed and paid for by that subdivision, so I guess that's what we're doing. A dedicated line for Abe's is what you're saying.
It sounds like the price to modify this one probably reached the $394,000 that you're going to spend anyway, right?
Go ahead, no, you're still on. Okay. One of the things that I want to make clear so it's not a misunderstanding is our frustration has been not being able to send our engineers, who I believe are as good as they come, in to examine everything to figure out if that was even possible. And so the fact is, is that I finally had to make a decision, you know, do you fight it? Do you just go redesign it? What do you do? And I made the decision that I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to fight with it. We're going to take the city at their word, although the technical data's never been submitted to us, we've asked for it. And so I just said, okay, forget it, we'll just design our own system, we'll run it parallel, I'll spend the extra money on doing the additional topos and spot checking where the line is and all that. And that's what I, that's what I was fully prepared to do. And so Rick, I feel like, has done what he said he was going to do. He's been upfront, I believe he's a man of integrity. And so I just finally took Rick at his word and said, okay, that's what we're going to go do. So that's what I'm doing. And so I don't want anything to be taken as a negative towards him or his staff. It's just the lack of ability to look at plans. And I will say that we don't have this problem in any other city, and I've built subdivisions in numerous places. We go in, we ask for the plans, we know all about Homeland Security, our attorneys know all about it, how it works, and you make the request and they give you the plans. You just can't get them off the internet anymore. And we get plans all the time. And we look at the plans, we have our engineers go through the plans, and that's how you design stuff. And when you can't look at plans and you're supposed to go down and sit in a plan room and you can't take pictures either, you have to draw it on a yellow pad? That doesn't work. And so that's where our frustration lies. Because we've got really good engineers and they've got good engineers, we just want to prove up what's there. And so like I said, finally just made the decision that that's the way it's going to be, and so that's what we're going to do, and I'm okay with it.
Okay.
But it is a huge expense and it does run up the cost of the project, that's why I'm trying to look at everything and do this thing right. But their department has been above board, I have no problems with their department whatsoever. And I want, I really do want that to be clear.
Councilman Couch. Is it possible that, you know, that if we approve this as presented and approved through the Planning and Zoning Commission, that there could be a caveat that there could be more study done with your engineers and our engineers that if in fact there's a way to do this more economically for you, that we could potentially bring that back and make an exception?
God, I don't think there is, what the council's asking is if, can you bring that back at a later date? I think you'd have to deny that preliminary plat could do it, right?
So what we can do is just act on the variance in and of itself. So what's coming from you is, from the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommendation of denial. We're at a preliminary plat, it's a conceptual plat. Typically, we don't, the developer, after they do the preliminary plat, they get into the weeds with the engineering plans or final plat. There is no requirement at the city, under the city code, that they have to submit the variance request in concert with a plat. So he doesn't have to wait until the final plat. If he takes whatever information he's getting from this council tonight, he can go back, if council hypothetically denies the variance, he can go back and re-request the variance before he finalizes his engineering plans and submits the final plat. We also had that discussion in the hallway prior to the council meeting. So however these variances work out, and then we had this discussion of P and Z, it's an issue of rightness. Whether or not where he is at this stage in project development is the city okaying the variance, is it right for the city to consider even approval when it hasn't been proven up yet? So Carl's aware of that, there's a process to say you can deny it, but the developer can submit another variance at any given point in time as he's going through his engineering plans and go directly to the city council and try to get that variance properly acted on to get more comfort level as he gets more into the weeds of his engineering. I hope that answers your question.
I think so.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Allen, go ahead.
Sir, you talked about no sidewalks.
Oh, yes, sir.
On certain areas. We turned down a retirement home or a nursing home right by Mr. Greer's office because they couldn't fit the sidewalks to make it work. We turned them down, they're not here. I don't do anything to hurt anybody, but I think we've been real strong, our council, about sidewalks. And I agree with what you're saying on the main highway where your commercial property is, you put them in, trucks and stuff are going to break them, tear them up. I would like to see the sidewalks in front. You may have to, what's that side street called?
Holly Hills.
Holly Hills. You might have to go around the big trees, but you said the road was real narrow and if kids are out there walking, they sure don't need to be in the road.
It's just a bar ditch, that's the problem.
Yeah.
In other words, it's a county road, it's not even a city, it's not even in the city limits.
Yeah.
It's just in the ETJ. And, well, that gets into a whole different issue as far as, you know, who has the authority to be over there? And like I said, I have, you know, I found out that it's a hot button for the city, and so like I said, I'll, you know, gladly amend my variance request, I'll put them in at 567 and 51. Holly Hills, it literally is...
It's going to be the back of the houses anyway, right?
Yes, sir. It'll be the back, and that gate does not have access. In other words, you can't walk through that gate, you have to actually have a, you know, it's a sticker that goes on the window.
Yeah.
And so we're doing everything we can to make sure that pedestrian and vehicular traffic doesn't go through that, it's just another point of emergency access.
Okay.
And so that's why I was thinking, if, you know, if I ran it down from the main entrance down 567, then I really do believe that achieves what we're looking to achieve. And that's why I was hoping that the council would, you know, allow that. I just literally have spent an inordinate amount of time, and I'm just telling you, I don't, I don't, I don't know how you do it on Holly Hills, and I've worked on this since January.
Well, I know y'all built a nice subdivision, I live right across the street from one.
Oh, okay.
One of our councilmen lives in one of yours, so I know you do a good job. The last question is, on those lots, the small lots, are they 40 foot wide?
Yes, sir, they're 40 footers. Granbury actually doesn't have a particular category for 40s. And it's become a real buildable asset. You're seeing them all over in different communities. And so that's why I wanted to do a little bit different thing and bring it inside, but it is a 40 footer, yes, sir.
And you're going to have a 15 foot on each, or five and 10?
Five and five.
So you take Ken away, you've got 30 foot.
It's a 30 foot building pad, yes, sir. And I actually build the pads when I do the, not the houses, but I build the pads ahead of time. And yeah, it's a 30 foot plan, and like I said, I'm actually copying, it's not an original idea, I'm copying other subdivisions that I went and looked at. A lot of the retired empty nesters are wanting to go to that kind of thing. And they're nice, it's just it's a smaller plan, most of them are 1800 to 1900 square feet.
Two stories.
Yes, sir.
I just, I thought it was 15, I thought, well, that's not going to give you too much.
Oh, no, 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 it's 10. We didn't change it, we just, instead of putting it eight inches on one, which we really didn't understand, we just made it five and five.
Yeah.
And I'll build my 30 foot pad right in the middle, yes, sir.
I think the city manager has a question for you, Mr. Greer.
Start by saying, we really appreciate all the development you've done in our community, you've made a big impact, and we appreciate it. I do have a few questions that I need answered. Have you done a TIA on Holly Hills?
We did a full traffic study on all three streets, yes, sir.
And the impact of your development on Holly Hills is...
It's minimal.
Okay.
Now, the impact on the other two, you know, we've, the submission to Tech Stop, we actually have deceleration lanes where the traffic is, you know, the curb, not curb, that's, I'm sorry, the entry and exit levels, and so, yeah, we've analyzed all of that, and it's been submitted to Tech Stop and been approved.
So there will be deceleration lanes?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So that'll get them completely out of the flow of traffic, yes, sir.
And so my question is, is why didn't, when we were annexing, why didn't we go ahead and get Holly Hills Road and go ahead and bring that up to urban standard?
I don't know.
We never even broached the question about that.
Yes, sir.
Instead, we're asking for a variance. And, yeah, it might be, I don't have an idea what it would cost, but, you know, for the good of the community, that's the way it's supposed to work.
Correct.
Just like to put in a sewer line for the good of the community, so the next person can tie on and then it grows and gets developed properly. We still have undeveloped property on the right side of that Holly Hills court as it's drawn there. And sure, that's not in our, it's in our, outside of our ability to annex it right now because of the CCN is owned by Monarch, but, you know, they released this area for us upon request.
That's correct.
And the PUC is reviewing that application. So I know you've done a lot of work, this is a very complicated project you're putting together, and we appreciate all your work and hard work. But I'm wanting to know why we would say that you deserve a variance on Holly Hills Cemetery Road.
Well, I don't, I mean, I can't develop Holly Hills Cemetery Road. It's a county road and it just...
We can annex it like that.
I still can't develop it.
Why not?
Because it's an expense.
Okay.
I mean, if I have to, if I have to build Holly Hills Road, it's, the project's just going to, it'll never get built.
That's what I was trying to determine, is why aren't we doing, it's a money issue.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
You know?
There's only so many places where you can put money, and spending that much on an off-site sewer, you're only talking about 105 lots.
Right.
I mean, if this, if this was 400, 500 lots, then you can do things like that.
But it was also originally planned to be retail commercial.
I agree, but I've done a lot of retail development...
We're reinventing the color chart here, and we're accommodating residential in a tight spot, and we're not doing the infrastructure associated with it. If that was all commercial, it would more than pay for itself to fix that road. See what I'm saying?
Well, I've done a lot of commercial development, I've done a lot of retail centers, the big anchors with Krogers and Albertsons and so on, and they would not access that road. The back of the center would face that road, all it would have is it'd have a 24-foot fire lane in the back with 20-foot tilt wall buildings on it.
But our code requires it to be improved regardless whether it's commercial or residential. And that's what I'm getting at, is we've got an old country road out here that's not going to handle any kind of additional traffic other than what you say it'll do. And we're just kicking the can down the road and developing it to stop. I'm fine with, I want you to succeed at this, I'm just voicing my concerns about how we got to this point, this conversation, when the reason for the variance is financial reasons. That's what I'm hearing. And my staff and I should have stopped you before we got this far.
Well, and it's not just financial, I mean, you can't put a sidewalk in a bar ditch.
I know, that's what I'm saying, I'm not talking about urban standard, but that would be road, curb, gutter, sidewalk.
Yeah.
That's what our code requires. And we annexed this part over here where lots B and part of lots A are to accommodate this development, we could have simply, if we'd planned, we'd have done the road when we did that annexation as well.
But, I mean, I may be mistaken here, Mr. Kaufman, but, you know, it's kind of like Old Granbury Road out at Gemstone. You know, it was county. And I went out there and spent money improving that road, and all the county commissioners met me on site one day, and they chewed my fanny. And they went out there and changed all the striping and changed all the money I'd spent out there and told me, and told the city as well. This was before your time, but don't you dare come out and touch one of our county roads again.
We could have annexed it.
I don't know about, because I don't, I'm not in city government, I'm just telling you that it was a county road and they wouldn't let me touch it, and I'd already touched it because I had city approval.
You should get county approval to approve a county road. But what I'm getting at is, we've annexed for you to be able to put all this together voluntarily, and we're working with you, but this conversation has never come up about this other than a variance request, and I understand why, it's a financial restraint. Nobody talked to us about, hey, what do we do? We can actually assess property owners, their percentage if we annex them, you know, and have them pay for their half of that road and do this in an orderly manner. And maybe that's something we need to look at for your HOA, is when that approves that we, everybody understands there's an assessment for that road if it ever gets developed to urban standards. That's a compromise, but we haven't even discussed that. And then the 10-foot thing, I'm glad that that was an error because I couldn't imagine having my back door 10 foot from the back fence with a highway right away.
An easement too.
With five foot of it being an easement. So those are some concerns I have, and that's all I've got.
So how do we move this along?
It's up to the council. You guys are done asking questions, Mr. Greer, you're done with your presentation, right?
Yes, sir. I mean, just unless there's questions, we'll close the...
Does anybody else in the public wish to speak on this item? Okay, Mr. Overstreet.
I just want to add a couple things. One thing, I'm Lee Overstreet, Granbury resident, I am involved in this project because I represent the seller of the property, Mrs. Lansford, and she has already given tens of thousands of dollars in consideration trying to help us move this forward. As we've gone through with this with the city, there's been other expenses, and she's agreed to work with Mr. Greer and basically has compromised the price of the property to help make this work. One thing I want to understand, Chris's position on Holly Hills Road, that is a county road that the bar ditch runs right up to the fence, and there's absolutely no way you can put a sidewalk on that street. And those people, those people objected in that area to the subdivision, they don't want the city there, they want the subdivision there. So the best thing to do is go up to the fence and move on. But Mr. Greer is running improvements up to that sewer, and I just hope and pray that the city will grant these, all the variances that they can for this project and move forward. Because I've already lost a project out there at Legacy Park for the move out of the city just because they couldn't afford to build in the city. So I'd really like to see this happen and have the council consideration and try to move this forward. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Chris, you got one more item on?
I would just like to say that that sidewalk can be on private property in the easement area, it doesn't have to be in the road right away from Holly Hills Farms, Holly Hills Road.
You jump that on the road?
I mean, that's the way it works, you don't put sidewalks on public right of way unless there's a special circumstance. He's proposing to do that on Tech Stop property, and Tech Stop is giving him permission to do that. We'd have to talk to the county to put it on county property. The normal thing for a subdivision to do is to put it on their property and carve that out of the lot size. It goes in the setback area of that property. And so I'm just saying, we're skating around here not addressing the true issue. The true issue is, is we're putting a whole lot of lots on a little tract of land and we're trying to give variances not to do such and such and such and such, when it all boils down to cash flow. Where are the kids going to play and how are they going to get there?
But you're saying, but you're saying...
He addressed that a little bit.
I know, but what I'm saying is, just come inside the fence five feet.
No, you move the fence over and you make your lot size bigger to where the right of way is there for, just like you do on, at your house, in front of your house. You've got a curb there, that's the, that's the property that you had to dedicate to the street. That's the same thing. He just needs to dedicate more width to the street and build it out. If you designed it to urban standard, you would be doing all that.
Okay.
But whenever we say we want a variance from it, we're simply skating our, what I'm saying, if you don't want to do this, don't make us try to make it happen and have a variance every time it comes up.
That's my frustration.
Every time.
I can tell.
It's a hot potato, every time. If you don't want sidewalks, take it out of the order.
Well, it's funny, we take, we make some people put sidewalks in.
Yes, sir.
And we don't make the other.
That's what I'm getting.
That's my frustration.
Mine too.
I, I agree with you on that.
And, and you know, that, can you go back to the, the layout of the track, the plat? Okay, on the right side there, you see Holly Hills Cemetery Road.
Yes.
If you put a sidewalk in there and you dedicate the right amount of width for that street, you're gonna have the room for a sidewalk that's not in the bar ditch. But we're not dedicating any additional property for urban standards and designs there, are we Scott? On Holly Hill Road? Like we do Old Granberry Road? We'd get more land from them for the expansion of that road?
So the, the difference between Old Granberry Road and James Road, for example, is there is a county plan for the expansion. And we work at DRC with the county. The other dedication, uh, for roadway right of ways that we get per plat is because it's on our thoroughfare plan. Holly Hills Road is not on our thoroughfare plan for expansion.
Well, like I said earlier, I, I, we turned down one business cause of sidewalks and.
Well, they're actually coming. They're still coming.
They're going to another location.
They told me they're still coming and they've got the approved plat. So anyway, hey, I would like to just say that I would recommend that you go with what the P and Z has recommended. Because what I'm trying to do is make y'all understand what we're trying to accomplish here is fighting upstream. Staff is swimming upstream every development that walks through this door because of our regulations. And we want, we say we want this and we say we want that. But here we are tonight and we're saying, this looks great. Let's do it. Let's just go with the P and Z and their recommendation. And I think that's fine. But, and I want this subdivision to happen. But at the end of the day, we're building a community. 50 years from now, are they gonna say, where are our kids supposed to play? We're gonna go out here, uh, five years from now and put up signs that say, slow, drive slow, children playing. Well, they're in the streets. We're getting those calls from Gemstone now, you know? The, these are, kids are gonna be moving in here, we hope. And they don't have a place to play. This shows me a new layout that I didn't see before. With this lot, those two lots being taken out, it gives them a little bit of room to get there. But, but that's what we're dealing with. And it's not Carl's fault. It's our fault for, for putting the standards in place and then leading him down a path to where he can feel confident standing up before you and thinking you're gonna accept this stuff. All right, I'm through preaching.
Well, my, my frustration is that's not a new plan. That plan has always been there. And it's got a recreation to keep the kids inside the area. There's no other places to play. And I can't imagine somebody wanting to send their kid down Holly Hills to go play on Loop 567.
Right across the street is Jim Cats, which is a highly active youth facility. Right across the street is Jim Cats. And they don't have a way to get there.
And, and my other frustration is, is that, like I said, I started working on this in January. This has been changed 19 times, according to staff. Never once in all those discussions, and then so far, I've spent $109,000 on engineering and design plans to date. $109,000. And not once has somebody in this city said, hey, you know what? You're gonna have to do something on Holly Hills Road. Because if they would've, then I would've started looking at it. But they didn't. And now it's too late.
I'm hearing you.
Because those lots that back up to Holly Hills, if you try to take an easement out of those lots, they don't work anymore.
I know that.
And the entire subdivision then falls apart. And it's not dense at all. That's my other point. This is a 3.75 density. That is not dense at all. And the fact is Granberry, the builders in Granberry are gonna have to catch up to the times. Cause there's always been a five to one ratio on lot price to homes. You have a $40,000 lot, it's a $200,000 house. Well, they're taking $50,000 lots and they're building $350,000 houses. This development right here, the development expense so far on this, on the raw land is $116,000 an acre. That is absolutely through the roof. I'm retailing lots in Josiah at 50. My cost on this is 49,000 a lot. And I'm just sitting here eating more and more cost and working more and more through the city. And then I walk into the lobby and, and get hit with something that all I did was do exactly what DRC told me to. Put a 10-foot rear building line. I sit there at DRC and go, okay, I mean, if that's what you want, that's what I'll do. And then I get hit in the lobby that, why are you doing that? Well, it's cause you asked me. Nobody's ever once said a thing about Holly Hills. And if that's the way we have to work, I can't do it.
Well, I can't.
And I don't, I don't need to be in Granberry if that's the case.
And that's not what I'm after. I'm after your success, but I'm after this getting fixed on your back here. Not that you're gonna have to spend any more money doing it. I want people to understand, we're broken and we gotta fix this. You shouldn't have to go through this 19 times to be able to stand before us.
I agree. And Holly Hills has no traffic on it. And it's, it's a dead end.
Chris, I might also add, uh, that.
Introduce yourself.
Yes, sir. My name is Steve Reed. I'm a real estate attorney, uh, here in Granberry and I, uh, represent this, uh, project. And, uh, one other thing I think that's important to note when you think about Holly Hills, and I understand all of the things that you've said. But look to the north of this project. Where does Holly Hills Road go? It doesn't go anywhere. And it's never gonna go anywhere. And it's never gonna need to be redeveloped. I understand the, uh, the issue that, that you're talking about, Mr. Kaufman, and it may be a very real issue for Granberry. But it really doesn't apply in, in a very real way in this situation. Because Holly Hills Road is a dead end road that's never gonna go anywhere. It's never gonna be redeveloped. I mean, who could say never? But it's highly, highly unlikely. So if, if that were a road that just went to a bunch of raw land that was gonna potentially be developed, uh, and it was on a master plan, you know, that'd be one thing. But it's not.
No, it go, it goes to houses that are on the lake that are very expensive. True. And they fall in low country.
But there aren't gonna be any more houses that it's gonna go to.
Right. And that's fine. And we're never gonna be able to annex. So I understand that. So I'm trying to make a point that we're, we've got to fix some stuff in our house.
And I'm just very respectfully requesting that you don't make that point.
No.
At Mr. Greer's expense.
I, I agree with you. And that's what I say. We need to go with what the P and Z recommend. Don't let me derail you.
Thank you. Counsel anymore? Well. We closed the public hearing. Close the discussion. Lot of moving parts here. I'm gonna start with item number eight, which is the comprehensive plan. And I will entertain a motion on the comprehensive plan, counsel. You see, there's two options there, to amend or deny. So I'll entertain a motion to, for one of those on the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Corrigan.
Make a motion to amend the future land use plan.
So we have a motion by Councilman Corrigan to amend the future land use plan contained and a second by Councilman Couch. Is that right?
Yes.
Any more discussion on the comprehensive plan? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The comprehensive plan is amended. Our next one is the three ordinances. Am I correct in saying this, Scott?
Yes, sir.
There we go.
So your planning and zoning commission.
You had a chance to look at those. Pardon, Scott?
Your planning and zoning recommended approval of all three.
Right.
Uh, A, B, and C ordinances for the light commercial, the single-family residential and the PD, uh, as, as presented by the applicant.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve the, said three ordinances by Mr. Mobley and a second by, Mr. Couch?
Me.
I don't think that Scott can make a motion.
He didn't.
No.
I'm entertaining a motion by Scott.
I second the motion.
By, by Mr. Mobley. I'm sorry.
Scott Young.
We have a motion by Mr. Mobley and a second by Mr. Allen. Mr. Allen. To approve the said three ordinances. Any more discussion on that, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Those said three ordinances are approved. Moving down to item 10. This is the one that gets kinda tricky here, folks. So as you've seen, the, the P and Z has recommended the following action on the, uh, was, would be approval on the variances of 3.1 and 4.1 and approval of variance to section 3.1 and also approval of 3.3 allowing the easements. The denials are what we're talking at right, right now. And they have recommended the denial of 3.3A on the utility easement. And the denial of 3.6A for not sidewalks along 51. And I think we've heard that we're, uh, gonna entertain sidewalks on that one. And the denial of the variances of 3.9 and 4.6 and the approval of variances of section 3.9 and 4.5. So with that said, they have, they have also recommended the conditional denial of preliminary plat. And number one, the gate detail be presented by the applicant. And number two, an invalid maintenance entry by identifying the notable final plat. And didn't you say that one would be struck out, Scott?
Yes, Mayor.
So, well, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, also go with the, uh, P and Z's recommendations.
So move.
And I have that motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is also approved. Mr. Greer, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Show me a lot.
Our next item on the deliberation agenda is item number 11, which is a public hearing considering approving a request of Kyle Ellis to replat block 11-13 of the Taylor Horton addition as lot R1. Scott, I'm gonna let you give us a little report on that. If you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Mr. Manager, what this is, is a infill lot, a zoned, single-family residential, R8.4. It's located northeast of Stockton, north of the tracks, south of Grove Street. What we have are three blocks of record. They're previously platted under the old town plat that's hanging on the wall downstairs in 1892. Uh, part of that plat. Um, again, it's three lots of record, comprises 1.063 acres. It's, uh, purposes for the construction of a single-family house. Right now, that, those particular three blocks can be developed as three residential home sites by, by right. So in essence, they're, they're, um, decreasing the density from three to one lot. As a part of the particular replat proposal, we sent 26 notices out. It's published in the Hood County News on first. We have three in favor, um, and one was unmarked. They were ambivalent about it, I guess. There's the old 19, 1891 plat. You can see the three blocks, 13, uh, 12 and 11 that border the railroad. This is the plat application that binds those three lots into one recorded lot. Uh, as this is infill, we got the litany of variances. We have a variance to 31E and 410 to not approve trailer to curb and gutter. 31E to not dedicate half a difference of the right of way. 36A4 to not install sidewalks on Stockton. 35E for a double frontage lot. You can see the lot actually has double frontage on both Stockton and trailer. Uh, we have a variance to the streetlight standards. We have a variance to not install or upsize both water and sewer. Again, currently, they can develop these three lots currently as platted. We're decreasing the density by two, just the one single-family residential lot. You have a memorandum from your city engineer recommending approval of the variances as presented by the applicant. Your planning and zoning commission recommends approval of all the variances submitted by the applicant as well as the replats submitted by the applicant unanimously.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns to Scott on this item? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said replat with the said variances as stated. I'm making a motion here. Entertain a motion.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
Second by Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, any more discussion on item number 11 here, the approval of the plat? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. As said, replat is approved. Our next item is item.
I'm gonna jump here in between. I wanna make a motion to reconsider, um, Mr. Greer's request for variance on the sidewalks on Holly Hill Street.
You wanna make a motion to reconsider the sidewalks? Or you wanted to take a piece out of the motion, I guess you're saying?
We're, we're mandating sidewalks. I'm asking for a reconsideration of that agenda item. I guess I can go into that.
It was denied though. I mean, his variance was denied.
I think there were some, some folks on the, up here that were under the impression that the entire issue had passed with that final book. And not essentially failed because Mr. Greer said.
Okay, but that was the recommendation of, of the P and Z.
Correct.
And Mr. Greer can bring that back at a later date, right?
He can.
Why, why can't we?
Why can't we fix it tonight? Under reconsideration?
I guess we can. Waited, waited a little long to do it, but.
It's better night than three weeks from tonight. Is that, is that correct?
Well, you have to change the whole motion.
All right, well, I'm willing to do that.
It's gonna come to the, it's gonna come to the council again. That's what I'm saying. Well, what I'm saying, it's gonna come up to the council again and you'll have that opportunity.
I hope it comes.
It will.
Well, the way they left, I would, it would be nice to, to fix this tonight. But, so my motion is to reconsider that agenda item.
Reconsider that agenda item.
Correct.
On that one variant.
Yeah.
On the one variance.
Number 10.
Is it legal for us to do it with no nays on that vote?
Can't.
For the provision of party.
Yeah, any, anybody can make it because we all voted for the denial of it.
That's right.
So any council member can do that.
I will second that motion.
So what we have, we have a motion for reconsideration on item number?
10.
No, it's not 10.
No.
Yes, it is 10.
No, it's 10.
Can't.
Is it 10, Scott, on the, uh?
I believe it's, uh, correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, no.
Carla, it's 10 on the variances?
Yes.
10 is the preliminary plat. Hang on.
There it is.
Okay.
It's right there.
Yep, it is. So here we have a reconsideration for item number 10. And we have a second. Have a motion by Mr. Couch and a second by, for Allen? Or Corrigan, sorry? And the re, the reconsideration is to approve the variance for the sidewalk on Holly Hill Cemetery Road. Is that right?
Mayor, don't we have to approve the reconsideration first?
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and vote on the, the, the reconsideration first. So we got a motion by Mr. Couch and, and a motion by, a second by Mr. Corrigan. Any more discussion on the reconsideration? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Now I'm looking for the reconsideration motion.
Okay, I would like to, uh, make a motion to grant the variance, uh, to not include sidewalks on Holly Street. Holly Hills Street.
Second.
So you are making a motion to approve the variance of section 3.6A to install sidewalk, to not install sidewalks along Highway 51, Loop. And see that, both of them's combined in there.
You have to state it as you.
You gotta separate it because they're both.
P and Z recommendation.
They're both on the same one.
Yeah. 3.6.
So the only one that you're wanting to approve is variance. Well, they're both on 3.6A. Scott, help me out here.
So, uh, going back to the applicant's original request, he is asking, his, his, his application is to not install sidewalks on 51, 567 in Holly Hills.
Right.
P and Z recommended not denial of that request. So if you wanna issue a partial denial of that, say it's denied for Holly Hills.
Yes.
Okay.
Then that puts the burden on him to meet the standard for 51 and, and the commercial drives along.
Correct.
Which he said he would do. Yeah, they would not include a commercial.
Recommendation less Holly Hills.
Everything else is staying the same.
Mr. Mayor, really quickly.
Get some more discussion, go ahead.
I just want to go on record, I'm one of the first ones to not be okay with not installing sidewalks, because I think that that's a precedent that we're continuing to set. We do need to fix this, Mr. Crawford, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, because we are going to continue to have this problem. With the engineers speaking of this, and understanding what Holly Hills Cemetery Road looks like, and I agree that this is a good move for this particular property, and it's always gonna be this way, we're always gonna have some sort of discussion based on situation at hand, but this development, I think, will be a good one for Granbury, and I would hate to see this die because of one road full of a sidewalk. And the kids will find a place to play. I live in Gemstone, actually, and they play in the street, and we have sidewalks. So, I would, again, I want to fix the sidewalk issue, because going forward, if we're going to bring things up to urban standard and have a continuity in our town, then we need to address this. But for this particular issue, I do think that it's appropriate to revisit this. Thank you, Mr. Couch.
Thank you.
Mayor, I agree 100% with you on that. I think it's something that, Chris, you're gonna have to work with the staff to make sure they understand that if it's gonna be a sidewalk, the people know what, before they ever get to it.
And a street?
And a street, yeah, absolutely. You agree?
Yeah, I'm with you on that.
Okay. I will.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second, but for the, oops, for the city secretary, I am going to restate the motion. And that motion being a partial denial, the motion was to have a partial denial on the variance of section 3.6.8.4 to not install sidewalks on the Holly Hills Cemetery Road frontage.
Everything else is...
The rest is as presented, right.
Partial denial was for the 51 and...
Partial denial, and I carved that out of it, is just the Holly Hill part of that particular variance. They all still fall within that variance of 3.6.8.4, but we are removing the Holly Hills Cemetery Road frontage from that particular variance. Is that correct? Now, we have that motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Mr. Couch.
You're welcome.
Where was I at?
Number 11, I think.
12.
12.
He voted on 11. No, he was on 12.
I'm gonna put down my initial, Greg.
Scott, did we finish number 11?
We did.
Okay.
Variances were approved.
Okay.
If memory serves me, and then the plat as presented by the applicant.
Okay. The next one is a two-part one, also, number 12 and number 13 go together. The public hearing considered an ordinance number 1868, and number 13 executing an FIA and a replat. Scott, can you give us a staff report on that one, please?
Absolutely, Mayor, Counsel, and Mr. Manager. This is the old Kroger site. It was originally set up as a plan development, we saw that previously. There are just some minor clerical adjustments for the amendment to the PD. First and foremost is the property owner acquired the Aaron's Rental Building. So if you look on the map, you see the teal boundary, the purple boundary is the existing plan development that was prior discussed. The teal boundary is the expanded area that incorporates the Aaron's Rental to the east to bring that into the plan development. The purpose is to actually have the front facade dovetailed in with the new expanded facade of this particular development as well. The, we're doing some variances that are being requested on the usage of split-faced CMU as exterior facade material for dumpsters, for the dumpster screens, and the expansion of the boundary, and then we had some geometric shifts regarding the plat boundary or the lot boundary relative to the road. So there's three reasons, and that's highlighted in those bullet points under purpose as to what we're doing with this PD. There are, again, minor clerical adjustments. The following application is the plat application that creates these lots of records and the out parcels that we saw as a part of this development proposal, dedicates the road as well. The second item is to execute an FIA for the expenditure of the road. Part of the discussions were the 380 agreement, we all remember, to have the city bank a certain amount of money for the construction of the road. The FIA recognizes that. If you look at the FIA, there's an earmark for, rather than it being secured by the developers, being secured by the city, so that our finance department is aware of that. They know that this, that amount of money needs to be banked for the construction of the road to be drawn upon, for the developer to build the road. The amount of the FIA is 300, a little under $363,000. It also includes some water and sewer shifts. And the plat application, let me get, yeah. So back to the zoning, this is the original elevation that was submitted as a part of the original proposal, the backside, and here is the site plan. So all these changes to the plan development and the variances from the base district standards, you can see this 5.15J is to allow for the split-face CMU on the dumpster screen, and this complete page with these highlighted revisions is for the updated pad number six, which is the Aaron Rentals site. Again, just minor clarifications or adjustments in the PD. We, back to the zoning, we sent notices out, they were published as of tonight. We've received one notice in favor and zero in opposition. Your Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously by a vote of seven and zero to approve the PD amendment as presented. And then on to the FIA and the replat application. Again, the FIA is worth a little under $363,000. The replat application is to replat those lots, create the out parcels. As a part of the replat application, the car wash lot is a separate recorded lot. That lot is being vacated and rolled into this plat application as well. There's a shot of the plat. So you can see the dedicated Harbor Lakes Drive. Again, the 380 is funding the construction to be put into an account by the city to be drawn upon. And then we have a list of variances tied with this plat as well. You have those itemized variances as reported on by the city engineer. Let's see, look at the list of variances here. Okay. So we have a variance to 31E and 410 to not upgrade 377 to urban standards. It's currently a state highway with a barge ditch, or a US highway with a barge ditch. We have a variance to 3E, 3E to reduce the minimum 15-foot utilization along Harbor Lakes Drive frontages. This really affects those out parcels along Harbor Lakes that are within the side yard of Harbor Lakes. The development plan shows that those buildings are right on Harbor Lakes, well, close to Harbor Lakes in getting into that easement. So there is a building line that's tied to the development plan that's structured within the PD, and those easements that run parallel to Harbor Lakes that are consistent with each other. We have a variance to 35E to allow for double frontage lots on Lot 1R, that's the main lot. We have a variance to 3684 to delay the installation of sidewalks along 377 frontage until such time the roadway is upgraded to an urban standard. Harbor Lakes, the new Harbor Lakes and Crawford will have sidewalks as presented on the development plan by the developer. We have a variance to 39C and 45 to not upgrade Santeri Sewer along Highway 377. The surrounding area around this particular property is developed already, it has connections to Santeri Sewer, and it runs bisects through the property just north of the car wash through this, serving the joint properties. We have a variance to 39 and 46 to not install water along Harbor Lakes Drive frontage and to not extend the water line along Crawford Avenue from its present location. Your city engineer recommends approval of all the variances. That was also recommended for approval by your planning and zoning commission. And on the plat application, on the replat application, there's a conditional denial, the condition being that at such time of the, as a part of the subdivision process, the electric providers are required to submit a, well, they either need to escrow for the cost of the electric improvement relocation, or they submit a letter from the electric provider, in this case, it's United Co-op, to say that they've entered into a two-party agreement regarding the cost of that relocation, and it's not rolled into the FIA. They're currently working on that FIA letter. We, United Cooperative is premier with this letter, it's a boilerplate letter that we get, they just don't have an agreement number as of yet. The developer's aware of this, so they're fine with the conditional denial as presented. And in essence, that can, once that condition's met, then it can be filed for record at the county clerk's office. So, the planning and zoning commission recommends approval of the replat as presented with the variances as supported by your city engineer, and conditional denial with the condition being that franchise electric letter be provided prior to filing at the county clerk's office. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing for item number 12 and 13.
Good evening, Counsel. Clay Christie, Claymore Engineering, 1903 Central Drive, Bedford, Texas. Scott did a great job presenting while we're here today, just getting a few things, incorporating the Aaron's Rent, and then also just kind of cleaning up a few items, geometric, some of the curves had to change slightly on the road is what he was referencing to. For the conditional denial on the utility agreement, just so you guys know, we're fully aware of that. We actually got the design back late last week from the electric company on what they're wanting to do with their stuff. We have since revised our alignments of everything on what it is. We've submitted that back to them, and essentially, we're waiting back for a cost. As soon as they get us a cost for those improvements, then we can work out that development agreement, and we'll submit that to Scott.
Thank you.
If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody else in the public wish to speak on these two items, 12 and 13? Thank you, and we will close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott or this gentleman?
I've got one, Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
The City of Granbury doesn't furnish electrical there at United?
Just for the car wash lot, where the car wash is. The existing Kroger building is served by the City of Granbury, but that small portion, they have some electric feeds that run through kind of where the actual roadway will currently, where the roadway will be placed, so we're having to relocate a few facilities.
So on the screen, you can see the district boundary line where the roadway punches through, that's actually United Co-op's.
I do not know that.
And the City of Granbury is highlighted in tan.
Yeah, but I thought they were on the other side, I didn't know they were over there.
They're running parallel to the roadway.
Yeah, great.
We do have everything in place with the City of Granbury for the, for the actual Kroger building, the retail building.
Counsel, any more questions or concerns on this item? Thanks, sir. If none, I'll entertain a motion on item number 12 here to approve the said, the said request for the rezoning.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Ryner, and a second by Councilman Corrigan. Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Moving on to item number 13. Item number 13, as you see, Counsel, we've had several variances that were recommended by the P&amp;Z of approval with a conditional denial for the said letter. Is there any more discussion on this item? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said variances and to conditional denial of the replat with the letter to accommodate.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Any more discussion on this item, Counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Moving on to item number 14, which is a...
Mayor, if we can, we also need to approve the FIA. Was that part of the motion? Approve executing the FIA?
On number 13?
13.
Okay. I didn't read it into there, so. At this time, I'll entertain a motion then by Counsel to approve the said FIA for item number 13.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan, and a second by Councilperson Ryner. Any more discussion on that FIA? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Oh, I see, right here, Scott, you wanted to do the replat and the FIA separate, okay. Item number 14.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Item number 14, it's a considered opting ordinance number 1869. I'm gonna call upon Scott's object to give us a staff report on that one, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. What this is, is a SUP request to revisit the annual SUP for Walmart for the storage cargo containers. The zoning ordinance only requires in a, no longer than a 12-month term, we apply for these cargo containers. As we've discussed, the Walmart site predates when they have these cargo containers, predates the city modifying the zoning ordinance that regulates these, so they require vesting. I can tell you, I was here when we wrote the amendment, and Walmart, at that point in time, when looking back, had over 40 cargo containers on that site over by the nursery area, so it was almost like a shipping channel back there, looked like Pasadena. They've done a good job to work, they've done a good job to work with, with city staff in order to minimize these over time and really use them during seasonal buildup only, and trying to meet the intent of the ordinance. And as they've done, they've lost some of their grandfather status, so they no longer, they've divvied, you know, they've weaned themselves away from the 40-some odd that they had way back when, and now they're working on this SUP rotation for seasonal buildup. This particular request, they're only asking for the cargo containers to be used during, let me see, I believe it's October through February only, so they won't be out there 12 months, not the entire year, just that seasonal buildup year. They're asking for a total of 25. At the P&amp;Z meeting, the manager of Walmart also got up and stated that he's gotten pressure from the corporate office, and if he's here...
He's here.
...to try to wean, yeah, wean themselves off totally of these things, where hopefully they can go away, but as it is right now, the request is to move further away from that grandfather status and not have them throughout the entire year, but only have them 25 during that October through February seasonal buildup.
So it'd actually be through January.
Okay.
So, first of January, they'd be off a lot.
Greg.
Hang on, hang on, Mr. Allen. Let Scott go ahead and finish up here, and we'll open this up.
So that's it, yes. So the staff report says October through February 1st, giving them to the end of January in order to remove all those cargo containers. And then with those conditions that we typically imposed on, on the SUPs throughout the site, see if I can get to the conditions here, with the conditions that they be uniform in size and color, preferably tan, and overall general appearance allows for the use of 25 cargo containers for peak buildup, and that would be for that duration period, October through February 1st. Location will not be... in order to remove all those cargo containers. And then with those conditions that we typically imposed on the SUPs throughout the site. See if I can get to the conditions here. With the conditions that they be uniform in size and color, preferably tan, and overall general appearance allows for the use of 25 cargo containers for peak buildup, and that would be for that duration period, October through February 1st. Location will not be... It will be as shown on the site plan and not encumber any fire lanes, and will be valid for three years. That was recommended for approval by your Planning and Zoning Commission. We did send notices out. We had one of joining owner protests comprising roughly 1.6% of the total area, but again, your Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval as presented.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up to the public. I know we got manager in the house here. Is anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns about this item?
Mayor...
Councilman Allen, my name.
We've... Seems like we always give them a three-year on this. Is that what they're asking for this time, or one year?
Every year.
Mayor, council, that's what your Planning and Zoning Commission recommended is the condition number four. The SUP will be valid for three years from the period of dated issuance, so it's another three-year term.
Three years.
Council, any more discussion on this item? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said SUP with the said conditions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley and a second by Councilman Allen.
Yes.
Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thanks for your patience, Greg. Craig, I'm sorry. Next item is number 15 and 16. We're going to combine those. It's a public hearing and Considered Adopting Orders Number 1870, and a Considered Approving a Request of Misbreeding to Vacate a Previously Filed Plat. Scott, can you give us a staff report on that one, please?
Absolutely, Mayor, council. We've seen this property sometime in 2017 where it was rezoned from interim holding to heavy commercial to allow for a storage, RV storage facility, had a little office along Akron Highway. The final plat was approved in 2017. The FIA was provided by the developer with surety. There was a site plan as provided by the developer showing the layout of the office and all the little stalls that were going to be used for storage. The developer no longer has an interest in going forward on this. We're holding the surety, so if in the event our subdivision ordinance says if there's a walkaway during this, then the city has allowed to cash in the surety and put the infrastructure in. The developer seeks to get his surety back, and the only way to do that properly is to actually downzone this back to interim holding, which is a placeholder, and vacate and abandon the plat, put it back in the survey. So, that prevents any future purchaser of acquiring a legal lot of record that is supposedly improved and not having the water and sewer lines installed. So, the applicant's doing it correctly. They're taking it back to interim holding, and they're proposing to provide the city, which will be filed over at the county clerk's office, a vacating plat, which will put a pointer to that recorded plat to say this is vacated and abandoned and back into survey. So, your Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval as presented of the rezoning and the vacating plat as presented by the applicant unanimously.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll now open up the public hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number 15 or 16? If none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any discussion or question for Scott on this item or staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning changes as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. Council, any more discussion on that, item number 15? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number 16. Council, you've heard the presentation. Any questions on item number 16? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve... Approval of the vacating plat as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley. And a second by Councilman Corgan, or...
Oh.
Or all straw down here. And Mr. Allen, Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, council, on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Item number 16 is approved. Moving on to item number 17, which is a public hearing and Considered Adopting Ordinance Number 1871. Once again, I want to call upon Scott's object to give us a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a request to rezone the property that's located just to the west of Pirate Drive, south of Southwest Parkway, from interim holding to commercial. The purpose is to allow for a retail business, more specifically metro sales. We've received a pending C of V request. It's pending in our planning department regarding the outcome of this particular action tonight. It can't be processed. The CO says that there's no outside activity, everything will be conducted inside, so this is a request to go from interim holding to heavy commercial to allow for metro sales inside the building. It's a previous built facility, there's parking provided. My staff will check the parking to make sure it's adequate, and your Planning and Zoning Commission recommends unanimously approval of it.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. Now open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor and council, Tim Petty with Crossing Place Church, and just open for any questions that you might have.
There you have it, council. Anybody else in the public wish to speak? If none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, you have any questions for Scott or the gentleman? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said zoning changes as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch and a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on item number 17, council? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is adopted. Our next item is item number 18, which is Considered Adopting Resolution Number 1824. And I'm going to call upon Chris and his staff to talk on that one, if you would, please. Chris?
What have you been to?
Wake up.
Item what?
Item number 18 is a Considered Resolution 1824 authorizing publication of notice of intention to issue the... Okay.
We do have this project up and going. This is the resolution that we need to pass that provides a publication notice of the intention to issue series of debt. We've got this item on 18 and 19, and the first one is for water improvements for the expanded water treatment plant. And number 19, I'll just cover it while I'm speaking, is for the expansion and building of a new east water plant, water treatment... Waste water treatment plant and rehab the existing waste water treatment plant. So, those obligations are... These resolutions were developed by our legal counsel, and our bond counsel may be here tonight, and Ava's here. We could certainly ask her any questions you may have. But as you recall, we... In view of the time, I'm going to make it quick, we've discussed this multiple times. They were moving down this path, and so this is the next step. There's a calendar in your agenda packet that shows we're about halfway into this thing, so this resolution will be public... Will require us to publish in the newspaper and give citizens proper notification that we're intentional to issue certificates of obligation. Any questions?
Is there any reading that goes along with that, Chris or Ava?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Council, you had any questions or concerns for Chris or his staff? If none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to... For adoption of Resolution Number 1824.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan and a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion on that resolution? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We'll move down to item number 19, which is Resolution Number 1825. Council, do you have any questions or concerns for staff or Chris on this item? If none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1825.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Reiner and Councilman Allen, second. Any more discussion on Resolution Number 1825? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number 20 is to Consider Adopting Resolution Number 1826 declaring expectation to reimburse expenditures for improvements to the city water system with proceeds for future debt. Chris Coffin, can you give us a little report on that?
This item and the respective item 21 are the mirror resolutions for each of 18 and 19 respectively. What they do is they authorize us to reimburse ourselves with bond funds for expenditures related to the improvements on number 20, the water system, and on number 21, the sewer system. So these resolutions were drafted by our attorney to allow us to be able to reimburse whatever money we take out of our rainy day fund to keep this project rolling until we get funded from our water development board funds. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Is there a timeline on that, or are we working on getting reimbursement, or is that...
No, we can't get the reimbursement. We can't qualify expenditures for this until we pass this resolution.
Oh, okay.
How much are we talking about, Chris Russell?
Well, we're... The resolutions uncover all of it, so...
How much was that out so far?
Um... Ava, do you know? We don't have a clue.
Nothing.
I mean, it's not that much.
Don't say it like that. Probably $20,000.
Yeah, not much.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll move that motion.
So, council, any more questions or concerns? None? With that, I'll entertain a motion for... We'll go with number 20 here to Consider Adopting. I entertain a motion to approve Adopting Resolution Number 1826.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan and a second by Councilperson Reiner.
Allen.
Allen? Okay.
You're not a guy.
A motion by Councilman Allen and a second... Or a second by Councilman Allen, I'm sorry. Y'all sound alike. Any more discussion? Not you, not you, Trish.
Thank you for that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That resolution is approved. Moving down now. Item number 21 is Consider Adopting Resolution Number 1827. Council, do you have any more questions or concerns for staff or Chris on that item? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve Adopting Resolution Number 1827.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan and a second by Councilperson Reiner. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. We have completed item number 22 previously. And number 23. Our next item, we'll move down to item number 24, Discuss Review the Granbury Water Treatment Plant Improvement Phase 1 and the Financial Status of the Report. This was requested by Councilmember Allen, so I'm going to call on Mr. Counselor Allen to kick this off.
I'm looking here and thinking. It's been so long, I almost forgot. Okay. Chris, I'd ask for a cost on our water per thousand gallons, if you get that.
I have that, and I'll share it with you in executive session.
We can't do it here?
It's competitive, just like our electric contract here. Share it in executive session.
We don't sell water, do we?
No, we haven't.
No, we don't.
We sell water.
Who, too?
You?
Yeah, but I mean, that's our taxpayers. Okay, no more questions. We're getting them back.
I can share that with you in the back room. I've got a report for you.
Well, I wished I'd got it for tonight, like you saying we'll go.
Councilman Allen, do you...
I got it for tonight, too. So, you asked at the last minute for it. I was out of town, and there was no way for me to get all this work done.
You're always at it.
I got it for you here. I got it for you.
Councilman Allen, we can break for executive session on this right now, or we can do the executive session when we go back there, so this is your item here.
We got... No.
Okay.
I think Mr. Couch had a question.
On this item?
Just to reiterate...
Okay.
Good news.
That... Just reiterate why we can't discuss this in open session.
Competitive utility pressure.
Is it?
But it's already too. Who are we competing against? We're a monopoly.
Yeah, well, you're competing against whoever you're doing.
I'll refer to the attorney on the illegal advice on that, if you would, please. Hear me?
Have you researched it?
Yes, there is a provision that allows for us not to have to release that to the public.
Okay.
But, you know, whether we choose to or not is a different story.
Okay. I mean, it's nothing to be ashamed of, but it's just...
I want to show the public what a good, great deal they got.
Well, we may be able to discuss it and bring it back out here, you know?
All right.
So that item is a discussion item.
Last item, Mayor.
Hang on, Mr. Allen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, are you still on number 24?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay. It may we get... Got to go back in the back room to discuss it, but, you know, Chris, you've made a mark that the thing hasn't worked right since we put it in, or had it put in. Almost killed somebody with the pipes flowing out. Do you have a report for us on that? Can we talk about it here?
Yes, sir. We've got those issues resolved. We've been able to run the plant at near capacity as needed without additional breakdown. I will say that the engineering firm, Hibbs and Todd, InfroTech, has done a great job walking us through the process and ensuring the contractor to come back and address all these malfunctions, and it was very frustrating.
Yes, it was.
For everybody. And on October 16th at 2:00, we're having a ribbon cutting at that facility, if you can come. And, well, we're comfortable enough now where we finished the contract on it, we're in the warranty phase of it, and we're moving forward, and everything is working great. We are going to do some minor tweaks in the future, and the engineer company has been working with us really close to get that done. We had to go through TCQ for a permit change on the type of chemical that we use for clearing the water.
Is it that filter deal we had a problem with?
It was fouling, and they're going to change the treatment process for that pre-treatment water. And, you know, based on the changing conditions of our lake is what's causing that, and that's why they're wanting to go to chloramine type system instead of chlorine. And so, we're working with them on that. But overall, we finished the project with about $336,000 surplus, and we applied that to the pipeline on the highway that we're putting in. So, we were within budget, and very frustrating, and engineers were very frustrated as well. They've gone above any bond. They actually have a couple of staff members that drop by on a regular basis to check, make sure everything's running good at the plant, that are... These guys are operators of these type plants and experts, and they've been really helpful in helping us train our people to understand the fine tuning of the machine, you know? And so, like, there were variable speeds that are available on some of those pump systems that we weren't aware of how to make that happen, and they taught us how to do that. And so, they've done a great job for us, and the contractor, Gray Con, did a good job. Yeah, there's some mishaps that we should have caught on inspection or whatever that probably would have eliminated some of these problems, but overall, for a $16 million specialized individual treated water treatment plant made just for us, it's pretty good at this point, so we're pretty happy with it.
That's it, Mayor, on that one.
Thank you. No action taken there. There's a discussion item. Item number 20... Item number 25, and once again here, this Discuss and Review the Granbury Municipal Airport Runway Project was brought to the Council by Councilmember Allen, but also, Councilman Allen has moved number two of the consent agenda along with this item. So, do you want to discuss number two or number 25 first?
Number two, first.
Number two and the consent agenda.
Why we hired a...
Let me read... Hang on.
I'm sorry.
Number two is to Consider Approving a Contractual Agreement Officially Naming KSA Engineering Corporation as our Engineer of Record for the Municipal Airport. So we are on number two of the consent agenda here, and we have to make a vote on this one. Go ahead, Ms. Strallen.
Okay. I was just curious to why we're changing engineers on the airport whenever they've they've done such a great job on the water plant, you're just saying, treatment plant.
I'll ask Michael to address that for us, and Pat, if he's so inclined.
Sure. As we have discussed lately, it's just come time for a fresh engineer, new set of eyes, new plan on the airport. We've, basically, have reached the end of the VHT's services, other than the bidding services, which are only $16,000 out of the $21 million project. And so, we just thought it was a good time to make the change for the future, hire KSA going forward. EHT will finish the design work, and then we would start with bidding and construction phase and closeout services, and then just have KSA as our on-call airport engineer just for the annual ramp work, paving work, and things like that, was the thought.
Were they out of that?
They're, they have an office in Houston, and they also have an office in, Craig, Craig Hibbs is here as well, if I've been found. Come on up, Craig. From KSA, so wanted to introduce him anyway, we just weren't sure we were gonna get to. Come on, Craig.
Very good. You've heard a lot tonight, Craig.
Mayor, council, and staff, I compliment y'all on y'all stamina, so, but KSA, we're based here in Texas, we actually have eight Texas offices, we're roughly 150 total employees. We're in San Angelo and McKinney are two closest offices, I'm actually based out of Houston. I oversee all of our aviation services, Vice President for KSA. Roughly a third of our total business is aviation-related, and I had worked previously with Gary Hawkins. Gary had asked us to look at reevaluation on the environmental for the airport projects, which the FAA was requiring, and so that's where we initially got started, working with the city again, was related to the environmental portion of the project.
So what we've determined is we need more expertise than what was being delivered, not anything negative against Improtech, Hibbs and Todd, it's just we needed somebody to come along beside us and finish this out where we have more confidence.
How many airports you all built?
Airports built? We've probably worked at a total of 200 airports in total, reconstructed them completely, built runway extensions, new runway projects, so we've been around since 1978. Many of those airports, we started in 1978 and have been working with them over the entire 40-year period.
And we're in budget still?
Yes, sir, in your packet, my battery's better, I will read it to you, but we opened bids, our price tags for the electric relocation came in a little lower than what we anticipated, that was due to cord engineering, those estimates, and so, at the end of the day, we're still within budget, we've got a little bit of contingency still left.
All right. I don't know if this goes in this one or the one I put on there, but I'll wait till you get ready. But when I talked to you on the phone, I missed the meeting where y'all had an executive session, and I called and talked to you, 'cause I'd heard it was $5 million, we were short, and you told me we were only $3 million, and you found the $2 million.
Well, the, I don't remember that conversation, but I can tell you that the way it was supposed to be bid, based on communication in February this year, is not the way it got put together and estimated and submitted to Tech dot in August, and so, there came the rub. We all knew that we didn't have enough money to build the runway, the taxiway, and we were supposed to break that down, and that did not happen.
So you took the taxiway out, we was okay?
Uh-huh.
Like we planned. So, that's good, we was never short.
Right. Like I said, it was an error, and they're working closely with Tech dot right now, Improtech, Hibbs and Todd, to answer all the comments to the submitted plans, and we anticipate those being complete, and where we can receive our $3 million in December, we're being delayed from September to December because of this issue.
We got delayed?
Yes, sir.
And that was Agent Todd's fault?
Well, I don't wanna fill anybody in the bus.
I'm not, I'm just asking a question. I mean, if it is, it is.
We talked about this in executive session, I think you might have been here.
I wouldn't hear that, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the proper place to talk about it, we can bring that back there.
Okay, that's all the questions, thank you.
I just want clarification.
Councilman.
So, given the bonds that we've issued, we're still within the parameters of financing?
Yes, sir, and if Pat would like to address that, he's really in tune with all those numbers.
Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, so, would you like to re-ask that question, Mr. Couch?
Just a simple question. You know, we borrowed a lot of money, and that's already been approved. Do you need additional funding besides what's been approved and the expectation of what's already due from Tech dot?
No. Currently, the project is on track for the original plan that was defined in September of 2016, for a runway-only project, and our current projections are that we're slightly under budget.
Okay. Council, any more discussion?
And I just have one question.
Go ahead.
I'm about to exit.
Oh, no.
Is it possible that we could get some sort of calendar, understanding, you know, certain, you know, so the people can understand the expectation of when this project will be finished?
Right. The project, as you know, is driven by money. We're gonna be getting $3 million a year, that's the plan, until 2021, when we should receive $3.7 million. So each one of these projects are broken down, like the dirt work on the runway is over $6 million, so you've gotta have $6 million in hand, you know, to start that project or be ready to pay for it anyway. So as this funding comes in, we've got this project broken down. Right now, based on the current funding schedule, this project should be finished in late 2022.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Pat. Council, any more questions for Chris, Pat, Michael?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. So council, like I said, we do need to go back to the consent agenda, which is to consider approving the contractual agreement officially naming KSI Engineering Corporation as our engineer of record for the municipal airport. Any more discussion on that item? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contractual agreement with the naming KSA as the engineers. I have a motion by Councilperson Reiner and a
Second.
Second by Councilman Corrigan. Any more discussion on that, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. None, that is approved. Going back to that item, on the discussion item, Mr. Allen put on there, item number 25, is the discussion, do you have any more discussion on that, Mr. Allen?
No, Mayor, thank you very much, hope.
That was a discussion item, no action taken. Our next item is item number 26, which is discuss the island sewer, the island's sewer maintenance fee and the request to cancel that fee. This was requested by council member Tony Mobley, and I'm gonna call upon Tony, Mr. Mobley, to bring us up to date on that one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and this will hopefully be the shortest item on the agenda tonight, I know everybody's really excited to still be here, but this came to my attention in talking to some of the residents in the island, and during the construction phase of that development, it was discovered that the slope on the wastewater line was one hundredth of an inch out of spec. Therefore, we saw it necessary to charge them $10 per month to offset some of the perceived additional maintenance on those lines. Seven years later, we've discovered that there is, has been no additional maintenance on those lines, and therefore, I would like to just, if we continue charging the $10, I'd like to know why, and I think we need to, as little as this is, $120 a year, I think the citizens in that development would rather keep that money than give it to us.
So you recommended that we, that they're not using that fee, that we cancel that fee, okay?
Absolutely.
Council, any discussion on that, Mr. At, Mr. Kaufman?
It's not that easy. Pull us in on the legal parameters of what we need to do.
Okay.
So that fee is part of their covenants and restrictions, in order for that fee to be canceled, a couple of things has to happen. They're going to have to look back to their governing documents, have an HOA meeting where they vote, and based on the number, and I don't recall what it is, I think it was 66% or something, of the members of that HOA have to vote
Right.
to no longer pay this fee, and then the part two is, the city has to consent to that. So.
That's gonna be the most controversial vote ever.
Very much likely, I just wanted to make sure you guys
There'll be one no, I guarantee you.
We're aware, so the order and the sequence in which that happens is unimportant, we can tell them, if you guys choose to, that you consent or don't consent. If you don't consent, they don't need to worry about their HOA. If you do consent, then they can go to the HOA and get the vote.
Let me ask you a question on that, Attorney.
Do they bring it back to us after they do that?
Not if you consent, if you consent to it tonight.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question on that, Attorney.
Councilman Allen?
Is there anything on their deeds or anything that says this is part of the deal?
Yeah, this is a deed restriction.
So they gotta go back and change their deed.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I wish, I think it's a great idea, I know they have talked to us, or to the city manager several times about it, I think it's perfect timing for this to happen, Mr. Mobley, and I think it, order include in this deal that the people that live outside of city limits, we've been charging them one and a half times of water in sewer, so maybe we should just do away with that, too, to help these people out, but they don't have a lot of votes out there, but it would really help them. And I'd make that motion if we'd include them.
We're not making a motion on this one tonight?
Huh?
As you've probably heard.
I can amend, I can amend it, Mayor.
Any more discussion, council? On this discussion item?
I just got, need clarification, 'cause I read part of this, and there's lots of engineering talk. Do we have an engineer that's recommending that we do away with this if there's not gonna be a problem in the future?
No. Well, we did not vet this through any engineering firm since this was all done. So there was a negotiation that took place in your minutes of this, in your packet, where the developer was here, and there was this discrepancy, we had to go through TCQ, TCQ said, okay, y'all come up with a resolution, and that's what they did, and they put a $10 deed restriction on, I don't know how many homes in that subdivision, not all of them, but some of them. Rick, do you have some more information on that?
Still, what's in that fund?
We've been just putting it in the utility fund.
I've researched this quite a bit, staff and I have, and Jason Barber's been here eight years, and he spent the lion's share of that at the wastewater plant, and he was here when this development went in. There's been nothing out of the ordinary as far as maintenance in the island subdivision. Regular maintenance on sewer infrastructure, maybe jet some lines maybe once a quarter, something like that, but it's no different in the islands than it is, say, in Catalina Bay or Harbor Lakes or Waters Edge, or anywhere in that area, that's what I know. I don't have that in writing, but I have reliable staff member, members' experience. So, this was set up because these lines were a little bit too flat, the engineering expected maintenance issues, we have not seen that in approximately eight years. All the sewer lines in that subdivision, some of them were laid to grade to state standards, some of them were replaced, and the ones in question have had this charge put on them, so, but all in all, the entire subdivision has had nothing out of the ordinary as far as maintenance issues, and that includes the one lift station down there.
But do you think we could get an engineer to sign off on that?
Sure we could, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Captain Mobley.
So, Mr. Crowe, so slope, if there's a problem with slope, you're gonna, you're gonna know it pretty quick, it's not gonna get better or worse 10 years, 20 years down the road, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's gonna show up almost immediately?
Yes. Thank you. I may, if I may offer this, there are areas all over town that are exponentially worse than this.
This is no worse than your, than our average development, is that correct?
No.
Thank you.
I'll say this, we have a lot of problems in Catalina Bay compared to there, I'm sure. I see our trucks in there all the time, so I think the island is probably better in shape than we are, and we don't pay nothing.
Extra.
No, not extra.
I think Chris wants to say something.
Now, this, when I first got here, the HOA president from the islands came to see me, and this was on their list, and I told them that I would research it and get back with them. So I researched it through my public works director at the time, and he told me that we were having to go out there every month and clean those, that line out. So, when this came up with Mr. Mobley, I said, well, let me research it, but I think it's, they do it every month, so I reached out to Rick to confirm that, and he said, no, we don't do that, and I said, well, you better research it and tell me what you have done, and so, that's what, that's what he's reporting on. So, I feel like, I'm not sure why, but at the time, maybe it was just the right thing to do was to come up with a fee because it didn't match the slope requirement, minimum slope requirement. Today, we just make them pull it out if it doesn't meet that requirement, Jim will not approve it and will not let them bury it. He inspects it, his team inspects it before it gets installed, and if it doesn't meet, he just, there's none of this lawfalling back and forth that either meets the code or it doesn't. And so, this was, this was a hybrid situation, I guess, where the pipe got installed and maybe covered up and then tested, and that caused a problem, so. But obviously, if we're not having to do the maintenance on it, I think that the HOA deserves at least to stop at some point in the future from having to pay it. Now, to address the situation with the water outside the city, it is an additional cost to provide services beyond the sewer.
And Jeremy, once again, what's, what was the process for this, besides the council being able to sit up here at the dais and say?
Yeah, the homeowners association will have to call a meeting and have a vote of all of the homeowners and get a certain percentage of an affirmative vote to remove this fee as a restriction, as well as getting the consent from the city.
So who would coordinate that?
That's up to the homeowners association.
I mean, who would
I'll do that.
Contact them and let them know that that's the process, okay?
I'll reach out to them.
Okay.
And do you want to bring it back, or do you want to vote on it tonight, if they approve it, we waive it, or what do you want to do?
I'd say let them approve it, and then let's approve it.
Does it have to come back to us? Or is it just a saying?
I think you should vote.
Okay.
If you want me to stop collecting a fee, I think it should be a vote.
Respect.
We don't want to stop it, let's say approve it.
Right, we want, we can, is what Jeremy's saying, we need to charge it until they vote.
That seems fine, to me, and bring it back next council, too.
Well, obviously, they're gonna have to have an election.
True, yeah. This'll be a long race, at least.
Let's wait for them to vote, then.
Okay. So, no action, or we want to assign Chris to go ahead and reach out to them and?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, that would have some profit.
We don't need to make a motion on that, then. But, if you want one.
I'll reach out to them.
If we, if we deal with it now and vote on it now, we deal with it once, correct?
That's correct.
So you got a motion, Mr. Mobley?
I do have a motion.
Oh, no.
I would like to make a motion that in the island's development, we cancel the said fee going forward. After approval from the HOA.
The removal of the fee.
Should the HOA confirm the removal of the fee, we will consent to it.
Sounds like a pretty good motion. So we have a motion, as it said, that the HOA confirms the removal of the fee, we will approve that.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilperson Reiner. Any more discussion on this fee, council?
I have a question.
Councilman Couch?
It seems like we're doing this backwards. So, has the HOA requested the removal of this fee?
Yes, three years ago. Now, he's out campaigning, apparently.
It's not even worth how many votes?
Well, the thing is, in any HOA, even in our HOA, it's very hard, I mean, they're gonna have to get a form, they're gonna have to get enough people, either by proxy or by a meeting, to say, yes, we're gonna do this.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, okay.
I know about HOA.
Yeah, okay.
So why are we doing something that hasn't been yet approved by the HOA?
Because we didn't know, we didn't know it had to be approved by the HOA.
Because then it doesn't have to come back to us. We're already saying, if you get it approved, right?
That's right.
That if they get, if they get their paperwork, they get everything done, then the council is saying, yes, we'll approve that.
Mayor.
The removal of the fee.
What happened?
But we can't remove it before the HOA does it.
It's no responsibility.
So let's wait for the HOA.
You vote again?
Nothing happens until the HOA approves it, anyway.
So even if they approve it, though, do they still got to take it off their deed? So I agree with Mr. Counsel. Let's wait till all this is done. It's going to get approved. I mean, I'm sorry, it's elections, but I mean, that's what I felt about it.
I feel your pain.
I know. I feel yours, too.
So we had a motion.
There's a motion on the table.
We had a motion and a second. And we're going to vote. We had a discussion.
I mean, you got a motion and a second.
Yep.
Well, I'm in favor of this, if the HOA would bring this--
Well, they have to, yeah.
If they would vote first.
They have to in this motion.
Oh, we have to use votes, okay.
We got a motion and a second, and we've had discussion. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
We got two and three. That does not pass.
Can that overturn?
And we can reconsider, or we can move on. So we're going to move on. There are no further items on the deliberation agenda. We will now declare, excuse me.
Sorry.
We will now declare that the Grandberry City Council convenes in open session that all the members are present in the city council. We're now going to close session to the reasons of Texas government code and court authority contained in the following sections, Section 551-071, Section 551-072, 551-074, and 551-087. We will now go into executive sessions. The council has reconvened from executive session. There was no action taken in executive session at this time. We now convene into open session. Council, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
I'm really hoping this is the shortest item on the agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we renew the contract with Hyde Law Firm with a start date of November 1.
Sir, Counsel?
We have a motion to renew the contract with our Hyde Law Firm by Tony, Councilman Mobley, and a second by Councilman Corgan.
No.
Who was it?
Allen.
It was me.
All right. Second by Mr. Allen. Council, any more discussion on the Hyde Law Firm contract? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Council, any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
In the spirit of cooperation, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider item number 26.
Twenty-five.
Maintenance--
Oh, yeah.
The maintenance fee, the sewer maintenance fee.
So we have a motion to reconsider from a Councilman Couch? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Reiner for the cancellation of the fees for the islands. All in favor of the reconsideration, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That, too, is approved. I guess I can ask the question, would the council like to make a motion at this time on the reconsideration of the fee request for the islands?
So I'm--
So you're making a motion to--
To approve.
Approve and cancel the fee?
Yes.
So we have a motion.
Correct.
Yes, pending the HOA's--
Ditto whatever Mobley said earlier, the motion that failed earlier.
Yes.
Motion.
That's a perfect motion, yeah.
Subject to them.
With the said motion earlier, and we have a, we have a second by Councilperson Reiner, and a motion?
Yes.
No further discussion?
Mayor, could you read the motion?
No.
How about Pearl?
Mr. Mobley, read the motion, please.
I believe the motion was, should the HOA vote to remove the $10 fee as a restriction in their covenants and restrictions from their deed, that the city agrees to consent?
Their deed, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
On the record.
It's a $10 fee.
Correct.
You're getting better.
So there you had the motion. We've had a motion and a second. No more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved.
I'm a little dicey.
He found a new toy tonight. He found a new toy tonight. Oh. If no further discussion,
the council will adjourn. I'm sorry.